Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to make a couple of announcements before we get started, please. We have a building, a room capacity of about 210, I believe, and people who are over that in numbers will ask to be seated out in the lobby area. There are chairs set up there. As people leave, we'll bring more people in. We have one board member who is absent tonight due to a business engagement down in Nashville that he could not avoid. It was set up before we set up this public hearing. And Mr. Meadows asked that he be recognized. His daughter just had emergency surgery last night down in Winston-Salem. Things are looking very positive at this point, but he again will not be here tonight. So, one other thing I have is one of our board members, Mr. Creed, brought in a petition of about 280 people that are against the tax increase, and I'd like to leave that with the clerk.
Excuse me.
I'd like to call this public hearing to order for the purpose of receiving comments on the county's advertised real estate tax rate of 87 cents per $100 assessed value. This represents a 12-cent increase from the current rate. The Board of Supervisors voted to consider a maximum tax rate of 87 cents for advertising purposes only. The Board of Supervisors may approve a rate at or below this rate. In order to approve a higher rate, we would be required to re-advertise and hold another public hearing. A second public hearing will be held at 6:30 PM or as soon thereafter with regards to the advertised FY 1213 budget. I will call the name of the speaker and the next speaker on the list who should also come forward and be prepared to speak. Please come to the podium and state your name and your address using the microphone, and you will have five minutes. And I will hold that tonight for sure. I've done it in the past, and I think with a little bit of crowd we have here tonight, we must be selling Apple computers or something. I don't know. Please direct your comments to the chair and members of the board, not to the audience or the staff. This is our time to listen to you. We will not be answering questions during these hearings. We ask the audience to refrain from clapping or commenting between speakers so that we may clearly hear the next speaker. Please leave any written statements with a clerk. If you plan to speak and have not signed up, have not signed in at the table in the lobby, please do so at this time. We will now begin with the first speaker in our public hearing. And we have to go into the other side first, and then... Okay. Our first speaker is Mr. Paul Smeed, and after him will be Richard Workman. And we are very specific. This is on the tax rate, and that's it. So try to focus on the tax rate for this public hearing. Later, we will have one on the budget.
Okay. Chairman Chimbalitis, ladies and gentlemen. Paul Smeed, 1107 Kentwood Drive, Blacksburg, Virginia. Been a resident in the area for 52 years. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department and also the library. In January, I came before you and told you what growth was being made within the Parks and Recreation, and this continues. Most recently, the addition of signs and so forth at the Maravak Mines, the development of the Frisbee Park, the addition of another 18 holes is underway. And just the sidelines, I'd like to share some figures with you. You say, well, what's buying a Frisbee and playing? What's that mean to the economy or the area? But stopping into the Play It Against Sports, the gentleman in there told me they sell 10,000 Frisbees a year. So here's an economic impact that the recreation department's given to the community. Also, since I talked to you in January about the Parks and Rec, I found out that last year, they made 44,000 contacts. Now, a lot of those were the 25,000 people that attended the front line in the summer. But the adult programs, youth programs, all of those are exceeding the growth of previous years. Also, I'd like to wear another hat, and that is for the library system. On a personal note, I came down after my generation can no longer read, watch TV, and so forth, so I'm making maximum use of the library by visiting there at least once, if not twice, a week to receive books on CDs. And I found the library staff to be exceptionally courteous and kind to me. For that reason, for my interest in the Parks and Recreation Department, having participated in it for many years, my participation with the library system, I certainly support the tax. If I was asked to vote on it, I'd say no, because I don't think it's enough. But since it's only the two cents increase, I would certainly vote for it. Another penny would certainly mean 750,000 to the budget, which would go a long way to maybe helping all the programs. But having participated in all these programs, I can't help but come forward to you to say, please, increase the tax rate as you have criticized. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Richard Workman, followed by Linda Nelson.
My name is Richard Workman. I live at 212 Pine Drive in Blacksburg. Mr. Speaker, I signed up to make my comments for the budget meeting.
Could you wait till then, please?
Yeah. I will make this comment. A proposal for a 10-cent increase in the rate would cover the needs for next year, and that was voted down by this board.
You're welcome to come back to the next one also.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe people can speak at both. Linda Nelson did not come forward. Ann Page, and following Ann Page, Connie Froggett. And there was Ann Page and Jean Hyde together.
Go right here.
Okay. And Connie Froggett coming towards the front of the room, so she's ready to speak.
Jean and I are a duet.
And speaking to the mic, please.
Okay. My name is Ann Page.
Might have to lower it a little more.
My name is Ann Page. I live at 2508 Bud Pike in Christiansburg. I am a member of the Library Board of Trustees from District D. And I want to encourage you to approve the tax rate hike and pass the proposed budget. This will ensure that the library can continue to meet the needs of the citizens of Montgomery County through a variety of services which provide both entertainment and information. We consider the library to be a one stop with many possibilities. You can check out the latest book by James Patterson, find a copy of Good Night Moon for your child. You can study paintings by Matisse. You can find a book on how to write a resume. You can check out a music CD or a book on tape. You can check out a DVD, a movie, or a season of Mad Men. You can use the computers. It's the only place I know where you can use a computer without paying a fee. You can email a friend. You can buy boots from L.L. Bean. You can research a job opening and apply online. You can bring a toddler to Storytime. We have 11 of them every week. Let us help you introduce your child to the world of reading. You can join a book discussion group. You can research your ancestor. You can go to a community program, one on beekeeping. If we could all get to Blacksburg tonight, they have one on setting up a family budget. When I first moved to Christiansburg, the library was in a house on Main Street. Actually, it was on the first floor of a house on Main Street. There were so many space constraints that there was actually a history closet. Since that time, we've made a lot of progress for the library system. So I want to thank you for your past support and hope for your future support by passing the tax rate hike and the proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Connie Froggett.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Hey. We were the duo. Yeah. I'm Jean Hyde, and I live at 1310 Hillcrest in Blacksburg, and I'm also on the Montgomery-Floyd Regional Library Board, and I represent District A. And I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for your ongoing support of the public library. And I'd also like to talk a little bit about how the library is used by the citizens of this county. It's a very popular library. Over 37,000 county residents have cards. That's approximately 39% of the population of the county has a library card. It's widely used. During the first eight months of this fiscal year, from July through last February, the library branches in Christiansburg, in Blacksburg, and Shawsville were visited more than 269,000 times. That's over a quarter of a million visits to the library system. During this time, the library has checked out over 410,000 books, DVDs, and CDs to Montgomery County citizens, and over 22,000 children, adults, and young adults have attended various programs at the different branches of Montgomery County. And as you can see, the books, the programs, and the services by the county's public library system are widely used by nearly 40% of the county. Money invested in the library system reaps substantial returns across the county and benefits people of all ages. I'm asking the Board of Supervisors to continue its support for the library by funding the proposed budget. And finally, taking off my library board member hat and donning my private citizen hat, I'd like to say that as a property owner and a taxpayer, I support the proposed budget and consider it a necessary investment in our county's future. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Let's speed it up a little.
Okay. So we're going through all the budget?
No, we'll go through the tax rate first and then the budget.
We have to have time here.
All right. Ms. Froggett, and I just want to let people know who may not, that we have a timer on the five minutes, and when the yellow light comes on, you have one minute left. Okay? Ms. Froggett.
Thank you, Chairman.
And followed by Ms. Froggett is Jim O'Dowd.
Thank you, Chairman Chimbalitis and board members. My name is Connie Froggett. I live at 1751 Rush Mountain Creek Road, which is in Montgomery County. I am the co-president of the Blacksburg High School Parent-Teacher-Student Association. Today is my youngest daughter's 16th birthday, and I am a terrible parent, but not because I'm here instead of being with her. In fact, she supports me being here because someday she would like to be a teacher. And where else would I get shoes like this anyway? And she would be a great teacher. She loves kids, and they love her. She knows how to handle them with a gentle but firm hand. At the tender age of 14, she started her own tap dancing class with six little girls ages four to seven, two of which were special needs kids. In less than six months, she had them up on stage dancing in their first recital. As a Girl Scout, she has worked with younger girls for many years, and last year she became a camp counselor assistant. For the last five years, she has volunteered after school almost every week as an assistant in the What's on Stage program at Harding Avenue Elementary. She's a three-time recipient of the President's Volunteer Service Award, and this year she's been nominated for a New River Valley Leading Lights Award in the youth category. She's a straight A student and a member of the BHS ACE team. So why am I such a terrible parent? Because I have done everything possible to encourage her to become an engineer like her parents rather than a teacher. Why would any parent want their child to spend the rest of their life struggling to make ends meet? Why would any parent encourage their child to enter a profession where they would be under public attack from people like the Tea Party? Many of our citizens worry that this county may not be able to attract qualified teachers if we continue down our current path. I think we need to be concerned about attracting qualified teachers to the profession of teaching. Clearly, teachers don't do it for the money. I don't know anyone in public education who's getting rich, and yet there are people who want to keep cutting. We have schools in this county who have already used their paper allotment for the year because the supply budgets have been cut by over 50% the last three years. Two years ago, BHS lost a full-time science teacher and a part-time art teacher in personnel cuts. As a result, next year, no juniors will be able to take AP Biology or AP Chemistry, only seniors. And at least 37 students will be denied in art class. Due to cuts in the field trip budget, band choir students must now pay for their transportation to any non-competitive performance, even though it is required as part of their grade. And the list goes on and on at every school. But most of our citizens don't see these things because they aren't in the classrooms day after day. Even with the 12-cent tax increase, our schools are still facing major cuts that could mean totally eliminating programs, deeper cuts in supplies and maintenance, jobs lost, and even schools closed. This county has buried its head in the sand for far too long. We've kept the tax rate low by relying on increases in property values to bring in more revenue, which is a dangerous game to play. Now our children are paying the price. We have a legal obligation to provide an adequate education for our children, but I think we have an even greater obligation to make that education the best it can possibly be. We've heard over and over about one study that says putting more money into education doesn't necessarily improve it, but I haven't seen any studies that say taking money away does. But there are a lot of studies which show that for every dollar spent on education, we save $2 to $3 that would have been spent on prisons, court systems, law enforcement, drug rehab centers, and welfare for unwed teen mothers. Some citizens claim we can't afford to raise taxes. I think many more believe that we can't afford not to raise them. I hope you believe this, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jim O'Dowd, and he'll be followed by Valerie Phillips Downing, and if she'll start moving forward.
Hello. My name is Jim O'Dowd, and I live at 2431 Mount Tabor Road in Blacksburg. I'm a strong fiscal conservative. When I first heard about the tax increase in Montgomery County, courtesy of the robo-calls from the Tea Party group, I was very concerned. I admire some of the statements of Dr. Ron Paul on this subject, and I agree that the federal government meddles too much with public education through the imposition of rigid and expensive SOL testing and changes to teaching methods and curricula. However, none of these matters are relevant to this discussion, as they cannot be changed by the selected body nor by the individual local schools in Montgomery County. After being prompted to investigate this issue, I was shocked by my own ignorance of the facts and have changed my position from being against this measure to being for it. The proposed increase of 12 cents equates to $216 per year or $18 per month for our median home value of $180,000. I believe that the median family income of $65,000 can absorb this increase for the sake of our schools and our community. Furthermore, in 2000, the tax rate in Montgomery County was 68 cents. If one adjusts that for inflation, the figure becomes 90 cents in 2012. That's a 15-cent increase. I'm all for fiscal discipline, but the school board has been wrestling with reduced funding in emergency conditions for several years. I strongly doubt that there is much fat left to trim in their budgets. Cutting 147 teachers or closing exceptional schools such as Harding Avenue Elementary could be the direct result of not supporting this tax increase of $18 per month. That is too high a price to pay for short-sighted planning. I discovered that the state is obliged to provide an average of 55% of school funding with the remainder coming from the locality in order to maintain minimum standards. Most localities are not satisfied with achieving minimum standards and fund their school systems at far greater levels than the state requires. This is what sets them apart from the neighboring localities. Research from a Pennsylvania State University study in 2011 shows that individuals who graduate and have access to quality education throughout primary and secondary school are more likely to find gainful employment, have stable families, and be active and productive citizens. They are also less likely to commit serious crimes, be incarcerated, or to place high demands on the public healthcare system, and less likely to be enrolled in welfare assistance programs. Investing in public education is far more cost-effective for the locality than paying for the social and economic consequences of underfunded, low-quality schools. The annual cost of incarcerating an individual is around $32,000, while the annual cost of a quality public education is less than $10,000 in Montgomery County. Graduating from high school improves the quality of health, reduces dependence on public health programs by 60%, and cuts by six times the rate of alcohol abuse. We are extremely fortunate to not have low-quality schools here. That is because they have been sufficiently funded up to now, and standards have not been allowed to drop. The dropout rate for grades 9 through 12 is 32% lower in Montgomery County than the national average in 2008. The clarion call for privatization of schools and proposal for charter schools from the opposition is not applicable in a community that has up to now exceeded state and national standards. If Montgomery County wishes to attract young families and businesses to the area and encourage growth, the board must recognize that the first criterion reviewed by parents is the quality of the local school system. I moved my family here from Denver seven years ago specifically to attend Harding Avenue Elementary, and my expectations have been exceeded. I am horrified to learn that this school may now be at risk due to the gap in funding that would result if the tax increase is not approved. Teachers are not just educators; they also serve as social workers and psychologists for our children, and their value in our society is not adequately recognized or appreciated. Reducing their numbers and increasing class sizes will put a greater strain on their ability to teach and mentor, and at-risk youth will be more likely to drop out of school and reduce their future prospects and in turn become a burden rather than an asset to the community. We do not support such a downward spiral in this county. In closing, I urge the board to not be short-sighted in their vision for the future of the county, as I myself was initially, and to approve the tax increase of 12 cents as it is in the long-term best interests of the county and its residents. Our county motto reads, "Freedom Increases Responsibility." It would be prudent to operate by this statement. I would hope that all board members who consider voting against this measure do not want to include the deterioration of public education as part of their legacy of service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Valerie Phillips Downing, and if you'll come towards the front. Bill Newcomb will be the next speaker.
I did not sign up to speak, but since I'm here, I'll say what I have to say. I support the tax increase of 12 cents, and I hope you do, too. I said what I had to say on Monday without a big ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, Bill Downing, and I'd encourage people to come forward a little quicker so we can keep this moving along. After Mr. Newcomb, we'll have Alice Cottington. And give me your name and address, please. That way, I'm missing. It's on the list, but for the audience.
Go ahead.
We've not been doing that.
Can I proceed? Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
That's all right. My name is Bill Newcomb. I live at 911 Bracelet Court in Blacksburg, Virginia. And first, I want to say thank you all for your service to the county. Very much appreciate it. As a registered voter from Montgomery County and taxpayer, I support the 12-cent increase in the tax for this coming year's budget and that for a minimum investment in our educational system. It's a brief editorial statement. We don't need to read many newspapers or watch much television to realize that the world that we live in and that our kids are going to be competing in is getting smaller and more competitive all the time. I have two children that have gone through the Montgomery County school systems. My oldest is a sophomore at Virginia Tech, and my youngest is graduating from Blacksburg High School this May. My youngest, my daughter, has applied to several colleges and universities, and some of the statistics that came out kind of show how competitive things are getting for our kids. And she was one of 21,000 applicants for 5,000 freshman undergraduate positions at Virginia Tech for next year. And once I got my head around that statistic, then I read and learned that she was one of 23,000 applicants for James Madison University's freshman class. And it's not just about getting kids ready to go to college; it's also the fact that we read and we see that developing nations all over this world are hungry for what we have, and they're investing in their education systems. They're developing highly skilled technical, manufacturing, and service industry personnel right out of their school systems, and they're hitting the ground running. It is an imperative, and it is a community obligation, that we give what our kids need to prepare them to compete in this world which is coming up. We can't use the tools of 10, 15, 20 years ago for the mindset to move our kids forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Creed brought up the point that there are some seats back there if people would like to sit. Okay. All right. Alice Cottington, and she'll be followed by Sharon Brockman. Ms. Cottington?
Hi. I live at 210 Orchard Villane, Blacksburg. Public speaking is not my forte. First, I would like to thank you all for serving on this board and for listening to our comments. I'd like to open my remarks with a quote from George Washington in a letter to George Chapman dated December 1784. "The best means of forming a virtuous and happy people will be found in the right education of youth. Without this foundation, every other means, in my opinion, must fail." I'm here to ask you to vote in favor of the 12-cent tax increase to help support our schools. I'm certain that your strength of foresight will lead you to make the right decision and vote for our future. My two elementary school boys who attend Harding Avenue are currently taking benchmark and SOL tests. Their grades affect not only themselves, but also the teachers and the schools. The scores can potentially affect funding for the schools in the future. This is your benchmark and SOL test. You have been studying this issue for years. Your vote will determine the score for current and future generations of learners. It will also impact potential businesses locating here for the good schools. It will affect expansion and growth in Montgomery County. It will trickle down to the yet unborn child of my friends who moved to this area not only for its beauty, but also for the promise of a solid education. And last, I would like to close with a quote from Thomas Jefferson from a speech in 1804. "An educated citizenry is a vital requisite for our survival as a free people." Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Brockman, and she'll be followed by Jennifer McDonald, if you'll start moving forward, please. Ms. McDonald.
My name is Sharon Brockman, and I live at 710 West Main Street, Christiansburg. I'm going to keep this brief because you all already know how I feel. To my best of my understanding, we need 10 of those 12 cents to service our current debt. So to me, it sounds like you all are at least 2 cents too high on your proposed rate, although I do appreciate the fact that it is no longer at 33 cents. It was 6 cents last year. You're proposing 12 cents this year. What's it going to be? You know, we're supposed to give up one meal, one trip, going out to eat this month? Or this year, per month? What about last year? We're giving up things communively, year after year after year, and whatever you're going to ask for. And I'm thinking of something trivial like going out to eat, but what about the people in this county for whom $18 or $20 or whatever it is isn't trivial? So I urge you to, although I probably have the unpopular position tonight, to not raise our taxes by 12 cents. Thank you.
No. Please be quiet so we can move on. Go ahead.
Hey.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
And followed by Ms. McDonald is Irma Cox. If she'll come, start moving forward, please.
My name's Jennifer McDonald. I live at 903 Petro Pass, Blacksburg, Virginia. And I am here to vote in favor of the tax increase and also represent the Harding Avenue School, as well as several of my friends and families that couldn't be here tonight to also voice their support for the tax increase. I'm here for two reasons. I mean, really, it's two things, return on investment and also the passion that I have for the public school systems. I see that, you know, increase in the tax is definitely going to be a return on investment for our children. I spend a lot of time volunteering in the rooms, and I see the students that need the extra help. I see the students that are gifted, and I feel like by cutting the budgets and taking away from education, you're not only going to hurt students that need that extra little bump and need those extra programs, but also the gifted students that get a lot of extra attention. You know, it's a return on investment because these are the students that are going to be in our community in the future. They're going to be the functioning members of society, and we owe it to them to give them the best opportunity to be educated and get a very solid education and move on. And, you know, as I said, I spend a lot of time in the rooms with the kids, and I cannot imagine taking any more resources away from the students. At Harding, we have a very strong network of parents that volunteer in the room, and because of that, some of those students get extra attention. If we take even more teachers and programs away, those at-risk kids are going to have an even harder time. But as I said, even the gifted students and the special programs that come to the kids in the schools, we need those as well. in the schools, we need those as well, they're very important, and not just for Harding, but Montgomery County students as a whole, so that we can have well-educated, well-rounded children. And as many of the other people said, you know, focusing in on the education, keeping the children in school, allowing them to graduate and contribute to the community versus some of the other alternatives and things that could happen as we give them less attention. So I would vote in favor of the tax increase. I don't think that education deserves to have a short-term fix by taking budget cuts, but we have to look at this as a long-term return on investment in our children and in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Irma Cox, and followed by Ms. Cox is Jeff Wimmer.
Good evening. My name is Irma Cox. I live fifty-eight sixty-one Pineywood Road, Reiner. That's a gravel road, by the way. I appear to speak on behalf of agriculture, farmers. Have nothing critical to say about education. It is valuable, but I also have to remind us that our nation is way, way in debt. It's going to come home to bite us all. And I hate, I don't want Montgomery County to be part of the casualty. We need to be able to survive when the federal government crashes. What I'm concerned particularly about is, is the way we live. You won't see many farmers here, they're still out in fields, they hate coming for to speak, I'm there too, but we're struggling. We're barely making ends meet. To the folks who get cost of living or have had raises even in the last ten or fifteen years, it's one thing to say it's okay another two hundred dollars a year in taxes or whatever, but for us, for those of us who don't get those increases, it's a different matter. It's, you've got to decide what bills you're going to pay. There are no holidays when you live on a farm. You don't get days off. And as, as petty or as simplistic as it may be, we all eat. Farmland is, is at a premium. Every time a farmer goes out, we all lose. We don't produce all the food we produce, that we need, just as an individual family. Our product is meal, and we're at the mercy of a board that we not, we don't even know. We don't know the formula, and I don't know anyone who can explain it to us. We have to take whatever price they decide. It goes up from month, it goes up and down from month to month, our costs continue to go up. It's not fair to put the burden of tax on people who don't, who are struggling or at the poverty line themselves already. And as some have, have, in times protested and said that, you know, some of our people don't get paid the same as surrounding, it seems like everyone wants to talk about education. Well, we are not responsible for what's around us. We need to be able to meet our needs. It may not be all we want, but we as families have to live within our own means and our own budgets, and it's only reasonable that our county government does the same thing. So I do not support this increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Silence, please. Your speaker is Jeff Wimmer, and following Jeff is Rick DeSalvo. All right.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Jeff Wimmer. I live at thirty-six thirty-six Childress Road in what my wife and I jokingly call Greater Childress. And I want to start by thanking you all for providing residents of the county with a chance to address you on the proposed property tax rates. My wife and I moved here to Virginia in nineteen ninety-four when I took a job at Radford University, and we bought a house in the Childress area, offered date in nineteen ninety-five, and we still live there today. We did not have children at the time, but one of the things that made this area attractive to us and that helped to keep us here was the high quality of the school systems in the county. The quality of our school systems matters in both general and specific ways. First, there is a general benefit that we all derive from having a well-educated citizenry. More specifically, though, we need a well-educated workforce if we want to attract high-quality, good-paying jobs to this area and to promote the growth of local entrepreneurs. The quality of our school systems also affects the ability of companies to attract and retain employees and professionals to this area and to keep them here. Education helps us grow jobs and job opportunities for everyone. The proposed tax increase will fund the construction of new schools to replace inadequate and aging schools and will help maintain the operating budget of a school system that has been underfunded in recent years. I think it's pretty safe bet to say that no one in this room enjoys paying taxes, and I'm certainly a member of that club. At the same time, we all expect the county to provide us with services like fire and police protection and, and a good education for our children. None of these things are free or cheap, and they have to be paid for. We cannot have a quality educational system if we fail to provide our children with adequate schools or if we fail to provide the funds needed to operate them, and we cannot cut our way to excellence. Okay? We don't want to end up like the homeowner who tries to save money by putting off repairs on a leaky roof only to have a collapse on him later on. Based on a two thousand nine median property value of a hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars for houses in the county, the proposed tax rate works out to an increase of under two hundred forty dollars a year for a median home. That's not an insignificant number, but consider that cost spread out over the course of a year. It works out to less than twenty dollars a month, less than five dollars a week, and about sixty-five cents a day. As far as I'm concerned, my kids and your kids and everyone's kids are worth sixty-five cents a day, and I hope you will agree, and I hope to respectfully ask you to pass and support the increased tax rate for the county.
And if there's no, no applause, please. I've asked for that in the beginning, and it just slows things down. We have a lot of speakers here tonight, so be respectful to each side. Rick DeSalvo, and he will be followed by Alicia Lloyd, and if she'll start coming towards.
Chairman Plutus, members of the Board, my name is Rick DeSalvo. I live at twenty-eight oh five Heritage Lane in Blacksburg. It's my pleasure to speak in front of you this evening. I want to speak to something briefly that impacts every single person in this room: jobs. My jo, my job has me at times, I work for a consultant in, in, in the county, and my job takes me at times in front of industrial prospects that look within the Commonwealth. Part of that job is working with the prospects, working for reasons for them not to say no to the community, our community, that they're looking at. When they come to Montgomery County, it's not that they're hoping to locate here, they have thirty, thirty-five, forty names, localities, on a shortlist. They've got to be able to say no to twenty-nine of the thirty of those so that they can make sure that they've made the correct decision when they want to locate in, in our region. Montgomery County is, is key. You look, we do have a new industry going up there, and what those, what those key, the key thing that the prospect looks at is they bring, they're concerned about their core team. They want to be pleased that they can say, "We've got an education system for your family." When you, when they bring their core team here, I can tell you, working in nearby localities across the Commonwealth, the education card is played. They do it routinely. When we are second from the bottom, what message does that send? Now, you guys, for the most part, inherited this situation, didn't create it, you inherited it. We, as community residents, I know a lot of folks who feel like we have an obligation, not that we've got money burning holes in our pockets, but that we have to do the right thing for the long-term health of our community. We've got to preserve the jobs. Existing industries, if they're thinking about expanding, they're going to have tax incentives dangled in front of them from other localities. What comes with that? All the other cards that those localities play, time after time. So if you don't think education plays a role in long-term job creation, get out and go visit with the prospects when they come to Montgomery County. It's real. Like I said a minute ago, I don't have extra money burning a hole in my pocket, and none of the folks in here do. But we have to make decisions for the long-term health of our county, and I hope we'll have your backing with our budget increase and tax rate increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salvo. Alicia Lloyd, and Alicia will be followed by Ann Hess.
My name is Alicia Lloyd. I live at four forty-nine Buckskin Road in Blacksburg. I am a third grade teacher at Harding Avenue Elementary School. First, I want to say that I am very proud of my county's efforts to adhere to national and state requirements while facing formidable budget cuts. I have taught at Harding Avenue for seventeen years, and one of my favorite things about my school is that it is small. Not only can I make closer connections with parents and students, I can continue these relationships even after students leave my grade. Students tend to bond across the grades, creating a feeling of community. This camaraderie nurtures both parent trust and student motivation. Differentiation is a necessity when children of different developmental levels are placed in the same classroom. My favorite words to the Pledge of Allegiance are, "With liberty and justice for all." Liberty means freedom, and justice means fairness. It is only fair that every child has the freedom to learn, to be the best he or she can be in my classroom, but that means I must know what makes them tick inside and out. Smaller class sizes allow me to assess and address each child's strengths and weaknesses. Smaller class sizes allow me to focus on different learning styles. The more one-on-one attention I can give any student regardless of academic ability, the more he or she learns. With the pressure of academic benchmarks and test scores, I of all people respect the national, state, and local concerns about yearly progress and student growth. I have no problem with the expectation that all students need to be taught according to individual needs. I have no problem with the further expectations the public schools should assist in forming not only good work habits, but physical, moral, and social habits as well. My only problem is that I'm only one person. Our county, our state, and our nation are scrambling to offset educational cuts and funding. It reminds me of trying to perm the treaty or use as much of the treaty as possible without killing it. The first term must come in the form of staff reduction. Not only am I suddenly faced with an increase in student-to-teacher ratio, I may not have the special ed instructional assistant I need to help students who may not process information or directions as quickly. These assistants are the vital link between the special ed teacher, consulting teacher, and the autism specialist and what they may prescribe compared to what the classroom teacher is able to provide within a full, already diverse classroom. How can I be fair to the rest of the class if everybody has the right to learn how to think as effectively as they are capable of thinking? I am also expected to stimulate my above-grade level thinkers. The tree loses another limb. Suddenly, I may not have a gifted resource source person who can provide me with ideas and materials, so these children are free to be challenged, so they too may learn to their full potential. Oh, the tree continues to lose branches. If we didn't have a guidance counselor, I'm not sure I could use social studies to comfort personal issues. Although George Washington and Rosa Parks are incredible heroes and famous Americans, their deeds do not seem relevant to a child who needs to cope with a family death or divorce. The tree is almost just a trunk. I realize that I am expected to make all students professional readers and test takers, but I rely on art, music, and PE to often be the subjects where hidden self-esteem and success are discovered, like the beautiful ripple effect. When success is accomplished in one of these domains, success in other subjects follows because competence is contagious. A twelve-cent tax increase is not an easy choice, but investments cost money. Are not our children our most important investments and legacies? We have lived through some prosperous times. We have had some educational services for so long, and yet we can't remember a time we didn't have them. Bus transportation costs money. Educational programs cost money. Jobs are harder to get than ever before between the economic crisis and global competition. Blacksburg has been rated as a top living choice in the nation because of its high-quality education. That quality of education is more important than ever, but it costs money. I am just one person. I will continue to make a difference for all my students, but quality education is a team effort, and I urge you to vote for a twelve-cent tax increase so that Montgomery County may continue to help me make a difference and provide the quality education your children deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lloyd. Ms. Hess, and she'll be followed by Allison Galloway, and we have a seat up here in the corner if the next person wouldn't mind coming if they need to sit down.
Okay, I'm Ann Hess, seventy Crescent Drive in Christiansburg. I'm here tonight because I was absolutely livid last week when I got a robocall asking me to come and protest the work that you all have done in trying to provide services for our people in Montgomery County. I did some checking on the organization and what was going on with that robocall. It was funded, provided by Americans for Prosperity. This is a lobbying group based in Alexandria, Virginia. They have no requirement whatsoever to report to anybody how much money they spent for those robocalls, how many they provided, how they got their list. There's no accountability whatsoever for these people, a national lobbying organization coming to Montgomery County, trying to railroad their agenda through. That made me absolutely livid. I am here to support you and the hard work that you have done to come up with a very limited tax increase that you have determined needed to fund the services in Montgomery County. We all depend on these services, maybe not directly, but indirectly. As my wonderful mother told me, that when I am old and gray, I want people who are taking care of me to be able to read, to know that I'm going to get my medicine and not a cleaning product. I want our children educated not only for jobs, but for the needs that I'm going to be needing them to take care of for me. And it seems to me, when we talk about money bringing holes in pockets, it's a lobbying place from North Virginia that has no business in Montgomery County.
Thank you, Ms. Hess. Allison Galloway will be followed by Bob Hoover.
My name is Mary Allison Galway. I live at six-oh-six Allegheny Street in Blacksburg. I'm Director of the Adult Day Services Center on the Virginia Tech campus and work with people who have Alzheimer's, Parkinson's disease, that sort of thing. In coming here tonight, I was thinking about, you know, what is our goal in terms of what we want to have in, in term, in our, in our county? And we can aim at, at it in from one direction or another and probably wind up somewhere in the middle. But what I don't want is to live in a place that goes for the lowest common denominator, the sparest lifestyle possible, the least supportive safety net, and the minimum possible investments. I would like my community to not just meet the basic standards, but exceed them, to not live in a community necessarily where all the children are above average, but where at least the average is higher than average. It's a lot easier for people to fear something than to feel comfortable with it. Our survival skills, and this continues into Alzheimer's, allows us to react to fear first and more strongly. We're more likely to act if we're afraid of something than if we agree with it. It's easier to tear something down than to build something up. It's more natural to react and act than to plan carefully with an eye to the future. I would like to say that I not only support this increase in the tax rate, but also I think it is too little. I agree with the first speaker. I would like our community to not have to cut back on what they contribute to the Community Services Board, to not have to cut back on what we pay to have our schools the way they should be. And I would like to remind the Board that although it wasn't you who were in charge at the time, in nineteen seventy, a lot of schools were built all across the country, just like Blacksburg High School. The contracts were given to the lowest bidder, there were not very many regulations and safeguards in place for construction, and all over the country, communities are facing the same problem of replacing old and deteriorating buildings. and deteriorating buildings. Probably the high school I went to that had been built in 1930 is still more solid a building than the one my sister went to that had been built in 1970. The Cato Institute has some sheets out there with graphs on them, and the graphs are indeed fearsome. They show this incredible increase in spending with no increase or virtually none in bettering the student. I'd like to point out there's been a little bit of money inflation since then, not a whole lot of inflation in terms of test results. We don't automatically get smarter as we go along. And even though it says it was adjusted for things, it does not reflect the safeguards, the quality construction, the quality of life we have, the fact that a lot of our former dirt roads are now paved, our two-lane roads are now four-lane. There is growth, there is progress, and if we want to keep up and live in a community that attracts jobs and attracts quality people, that we need to pay for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My next speaker is Bob Crowe. And following Mr. Crowe will be Barbara Skinner.
Bob Crowe, 405 Cedar Orchard Drive, Blacksburg. Recently, there appeared an item by Arne Sari, who was the former school superintendent of Montgomery County, and I would like to repeat it if I may. I think a lot of people have not read it, okay? It's been two years since the collapse of the Blacksburg High School gym, Ruth. During those two years, numerous discussions have taken place about whether to repair VHS or build a new school. While the gym was the only part of VHS to collapse, that became seized upon the opportunity to push for a new school. Large sums of money were spent for structural engineering firms to determine if the rest of the building would be safe to house students. The engineering and other experts concluded that the building could be made safe for approximately fifteen million dollars, which included the 5.5 million insurance money for a new gym. What a tremendous savings. That was not what the new school affiliates wanted to hear. The pressure was intensified to jack up the repair costs, jack up the repair costs, okay? So a new school would make financial sense. Even members of the Board of Supervisors caved in to favor a new building citing the inflated repair estimates. Site and foundation construction has begun on the new high school, and it will be in operation in 2013 or 2014. There will be rejoicing and an open house, but the tremendous debt will be unbearable for decades on Montgomery County taxpayers. It should be noted that some citizens who favor the new school will not be living in the county in a few years to pay the bill. Many people, including school employees, were reluctant to speak publicly against excessive spending for a new high school for fear of being labeled anti-education or receiving reprisals from their employers. They are now, however, speaking out against the high tax rates that will be required to pay the mortgage. The county's debt level will be nearly three hundred million dollar financial albatross on residents. School employees should expect to be short-changed in salaries and benefits for years. Their salary increases and perks have now been committed to bricks and mortar. It didn't have to be this way. The spend-now-and-worry-later mindset has forced many state and municipal governments into default, especially at the city and county levels. Could it happen here? Only time will tell. There is no worse time than the present to burden county residents with a tax increase. It's time to suck it up and be content with the finances that are available to the county. Any tax increase will raise havoc with the county and real estate industry. Real estate investments, prices, and rents will take a tremendous hit. There still might be time to reconsider the Blacksburg High School decision. Many communities around the country have halted construction of new schools and other government buildings because of financial constraints. The Montgomery County Board of Supervisors should explore the possibility of doing the same. We have no idea whatsoever what it's going to cost us in the years to come. What's going to be the cost of living? It might be out of sight, really out of sight. We have no idea what's going to happen. Consider the cost of gasoline, health care, senior citizens' premiums are going up. How about the federal deficit? Do we know how that's going to affect us? Absolutely not. And then in addition to that, in the future, it's very, very possible that most of us, all of us, may be under the complete control, all of us may be under the complete control of the United Nations. Have we thought about what might happen if it goes that way? Respectfully submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Please, I've asked them.
There's too many people at the rear in front of the doors. You need to come up here and find seats or go out in the lobby.
Hello, my name is Barbara Skinner, and I live at 3583 Laurel Drive in Blacksburg. I'm sorry.
Just let me, Catherine Kincaid will be the next speaker after Ms. Skinner.
I have spoken before in this board during this budget cycle, and I would like to repeat that I hope the Board will support the eight-cent increase in property taxes as suggested by Board member Gary Creed, or at most, a maximum of a ten-cent increase. But I would like to surprise you this evening and ask you to fund something new. The Board of Supervisors meetings are videotaped and available for viewing online. Unfortunately, the school board meetings are recorded on audiotape, and though you can call and request a copy, tech support has to make the copies, and then they are mailed to you on a DVD rather than a CD, apparently because the files are so long. I made a request several months ago, and the first two copies sent to me from MCPS wouldn't run on my Mac, and they wouldn't run on a CD player either. On the third try, I got the audio on MP3 files, which I can now play. I don't know how much it would cost to provide online video of school board meetings, but I hope it will be considered. I believe our citizens need to become more aware of what's going on in our schools. The Council on Foreign Relations has published a new task force report titled "U.S. Education Reform and National Security," and the overview of the report posted on the Council on Foreign Relations website begins with these statements. "The United States' failure to educate its students leaves them unprepared to compete and threatens the country's ability to thrive in a global economy and maintain its leadership role. Educational failure puts the United States' future economic prosperity, global position, and physical safety at risk, warns the task force chaired by Joel Klein, former head of New York City Public Schools, and Condoleezza Rice, former U.S. Secretary of State. The country will not be able to keep pace, much less lead globally, unless it moves to fix the problems it has allowed to fester for too long," argues the task force. One of the main recommendations in the report is for our country to launch an effort to hold schools and policymakers accountable for results and to raise public awareness. So again, I hope you'll consider funding the online video of school board meetings. And finally, since seventy percent of our revenue pie goes to school funds and school debt service, I hope there will be more effort in the future to hold our school system accountable for both spending and quality. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skinner. Ms. Kincaid, and she'll be followed by Julia Lewis.
Hello, I'm Catherine Kincaid. I live at 405 Grandview Drive, Blacksburg. I presented, and I would like to ask you to, I think this is a little bit, if you can give those to the supervisor, it's a little bit different, the graph from the Cato Institute that shows that though we've spent so much money, this is nationally, we've spent so much money, we've gone way up. Our scores have flatlined nationally, and I don't think we're so different from that. I'd also like to say that I am not against education, I'm not against teachers. I used to be a teacher. I volunteered in Margaret Beeg School many, many hours, and I substituted quite a lot. And I would like to say that one of the things that I think makes education so great, and I haven't heard anybody say, are the parents. Your kids do well in large part because you have parents who are very interested in help, and I don't think they've gotten the credit here. I would like to also ask, with the economy in such bad shape, why did you decide to build two new schools and remodel a third? Not everybody made that decision, but most people did. And according to those graphs of one study, as I said, the spending for the public education has gone up since 1970, and academic achievement has been flat. During this same period, the ratio of staff to students has increased by seventy percent. Bricks and mortar do not produce well-educated students. This county has chosen bricks and mortar over students and teachers and the citizens. We will have one of the fanciest courthouses around, especially for a county this size. That will be of little comfort to citizens and retired, or eventually laid-off teachers when they are in the grocery store trying to stretch their food dollars with peanut butter and beans. That will be of little comfort when they are shutting the doors on their foreclosed homes, and if you don't think their foreclosed homes here are right around in the county and city. Others who have been advocating for more and more spending may have moved on to bigger and better things, but those who love this county and want to stay here will be left with bills. Some people won't need help, and that isn't great. Others will need help to get help, but those caught in the middle will have to struggle to survive. These are not only senior citizens. Young people with families will be hit hard, along with small business owners who rely only on themselves. And what about the children that we're talking about tonight, and those children who don't have Christmas gifts, or they don't have food because their parents are paying too much for taxes, gas, and who knows what? One senior citizen asked me yesterday, he said he'd lived all of his life in Blacksburg, and he was having a hard time paying his taxes now, and he said, "What do the supervisors think I'm going to do?" What do you think he's going to do? If he's expected to cut his spending, why can't you? When people are losing their jobs and homes, why can't you find a way to cut unnecessary spending? Do you spend your own money that way? Or is it just when you're spending the money of the citizens that you're so generous? If we're all expected to cut our spending to pay for opulent buildings, like schools and courthouse and so on, why can't you help us by cutting your spending, at least until we can get past the current situation? Also, here's a little PS. Do you think they should have torn down the Washington Monument and the National Cathedral when the earthquake happened? Also, one other thing I have, where are these jobs? My children all got a good education, and they had a lot of help from home, I'll tell you, but they've all got good jobs, but they couldn't find jobs here. And another thing, I have this book by Dave Ramsey, if anybody wants that, called "The Total Money Makeover," if you all would like to borrow that. I would love for you to have it.
Please, keep quiet.
And if anybody would like one of these, I would be glad to help you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kincaid. Ms. Lewis, please, and following Ms. Lewis is Roger Lewis.
I would like to point out that Americans for Prosperity is a lobbying organization that was created by the billionaire Koch brothers. And I realize times are tough, and nobody, including myself, wants to pay more taxes. But then, on the other hand, I really want the services. I would just hate for our sheriff's department to shut down, our libraries to shut down, our schools to shut down, et cetera. So I do support this twelve-cent tax increase.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. And Mr. Lewis, and following Mr. Lewis is Doug Chancy.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I support the tax increase, but we need to take in the months to come a look. If I have some suggestions, I can't read anymore, so I've asked my wife if she will read my statement.
I believe members of the Board of Supervisors and the school board and their staffs have worked very hard to come up with an acceptable budget in a time of economic stress, crushing capital needs, and delay in knowing what state revenues will be forthcoming. Thank you. Before the next budget cycle, I urge the two boards to convene here a one- or two-day open conference to present known problems ahead and to seek out ideas from the public. The conference should bring together some key legislators, executive branch officials, and representatives of counties, towns, cities, school districts, and statewide organizations representing those groups. Some suggestive topics. Number one, would a one-cent increase in the state income tax take pressure off the real property tax? Two, as residential housing properties drop in value, does this mean that more and more families may be going into what may be called hidden welfare because their property taxes cover less and less of school costs, forcing the community at large to support them? Three, is it time to shrink the Dillon Rule that requires General Assembly approval of what counties, towns, and school districts may or may not do, no matter how admirable? Four, should a municipality such as Blacksburg consider a gaming and learning facility to create jobs and pull in outside money, something that our nearby West Virginian neighbors are doing? Five, should we try to step up two-way student exchange efforts so our youngsters and beyond can understand foreign languages, cultures, and business practices? We Americans are quarrelsome lot, and it is a wonder we get along as well as we do. It's well sometimes to recall the famous words of Winston Churchill, "Democracy is the worst possible type of government, except for all others."
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Lewis. The next speaker is Doug Chancy, and he'll be followed by Tom Zuckerman.
Good evening, supervisor and all the members of the board. My name is Doug Chancy. I live at 2068 Lusters Gate Road in Montgomery County. And first of all, I'd like to address all the people for the tax increase, which I am utterly for, and I would request that they continue not to clap after each of our endorsements for this tax and not stoop to the rude behavior of the people against the tax that keep clapping.
Please address the board.
Okay. Well, I would like you to recognize the fact.
I've done that.
Okay. I would recognize the fact that the people for the tax did not start clapping until the people against the tax started clapping. Okay, so I'll try to stay positive. I don't have any prepared notes, but I'd like to congratulate the gentleman that had the child graduate from Blacksburg High School, but I have to remind him that his child graduated from the High School, but I have to remind him that his child graduated from the middle school, because there is no Blacksburg High School. I was a welder for 20 years, and I was on many, many jobs that I had to leave because of the shoddy welding. And I looked at the gym collapse, and I saw, and I knew right away that it was a shoddy welding. And there is shoddy welding in the rest of the school, I'm sure, and many other buildings around the county. So I do believe we need this tax not only for education. I think that there are things, you know, people talk about, what am I going to do about health care? What am I going to do about this? What am I going to do about that for myself? But I'm here to talk about, what are we going to do? What are we all going to do to help the children in the future have the quality of life that we've known? We live a good life, most of us. I have compassion for the farmer that spoke. I do believe that there is a way to raise the tax of 12 percent on the very wealthy in the county. You know, if they make over $500,000, let them pay 20 cents on the dollar. If you make under $25,000, maybe you're exempt. Certainly, let the teachers be exempt from this tax, unless it gets too complicated. Maybe we can do it by scale, so that everybody is satisfied. I don't, you know, I don't know what else to say, but the fact that, you know, I think there's some people in the room that are not going to be satisfied until the only books in school are Atlas Shrugged and the Bible. So I don't want to see that. I want to see the great books of the Western world in the school libraries. I want to see computers at every student's desk. I want to see the students staying here in Montgomery County, and I want to see new industries coming here and paying their taxes, their corporate taxes. I want to see people live a quality life that we deserve, with when we go to the hospital, we're taken care of. You know, when we want to educate our children past high school, we don't have to look at debt for the next 30 years because of these sharks giving these students loans. I hear now that they want to double the interest rate on student loans. We want our people going to Virginia Tech to be able to afford it. So, in conclusion, please know the people that you're kowtowing to if you do not raise this tax. I believe that they're mean-spirited and narcissistic. They're not looking to seven generations in the future.
Thank you, Mrs. Tom Zuckerer. And following Tom Zuckerer will be Kelly Pleasant. Yeah, they have a speaker out in the hallway. Apparently, Mr. Zuckerer is not here. Ms. Pleasant? And following Ms. Pleasant will be Erin Bull.
Good evening, Chairman of the List and members of the Board of Supervisors. I am Kelly Pleasant, President of the Montgomery County Education Association, and I live at 2737 Old Ford Road in Blacksburg. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you tonight in favor of the advertised 12-cent tax rate. I say I speak in favor of the advertised rate, even though a tax increase affects my colleagues, members of my association, my neighbors, and my household as well. Some will say raising the tax rate is unfair and irresponsible. I contend that it is irresponsible to continually underfund county services. To continue to expect to support services in 2012 with the same amount of money that we were spending in 2007 and '08 is illogical. It is unfortunate that the state has not yet fully funded their obligation to Virginia's public schools. It is shameful that the localities are expected to pick up the deficits left by that continued underfunding. It is inequity that localities such as Montgomery County have no taxing recourse other than raising property taxes, as cities have meal taxes and other usage taxes that can fund their budgets. It is further unfair that teachers are being treated as if they have caused the collapse of state and local economies with their high salaries and benefits, benefits that were promised for years as compensation for salaries that were much lower than other professionals. It is further shameful that the VRS has been raided for years, and now the governor wants it to be refunded on the backs of localities who didn't create the shortages. Earlier this month, during Parent Teacher Conference Day, a group of retired teachers dropped by my school with a huge spread of goodies. And during my thank yous, I engaged in a conversation about education and the state of the teaching profession today. One lady commented to me that when she was in teaching, she felt revered, respected, and was sorry that current teachers had to continually defend ourselves and our profession. I doubt that any of us entered the teaching profession to be revered, and we certainly did not enter to become wealthy. But we also did not expect to be reviled, as we have been in recent years in the press, in Richmond, in Washington, D.C. Somehow, public education has become a scapegoat, something to blame for economic problems in the county, in the state, and nationwide. I, for one, am growing tired of having to defend teachers and administrators and the support staff of Montgomery County who work long hours under increased stressful circumstances. We are expected to contend with high-stakes testing and additional responsibilities daily, even while fielding criticism from people not associated with education and who are many years removed from a classroom themselves. We are told we do not deserve the salaries we are earning, our benefits are too rich, our promised retirement unsustainable. We are educational professionals, highly qualified and uniquely trained to teach the students of Montgomery County. We will not apologize for requesting cost-of-living increases in our salary or for our benefits. We are hardworking, we are dedicated, and at times, we're worn out. Public education is not the problem, we are the solution. And if nobody thinks so, then why does everything end up getting added to the schools list to be solved? I urge you to approve the 12-cent tax increase. Buses need to be bought, schools need to be built, technology must be upgraded to educate students in 2012 and beyond for their lives and careers in the 21st century. In short, we must move forward. The future of the county lies in the education of its populace, the school-aged children of Montgomery County. And at the heart of those schools are the employees who work there. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Bull. And following Erin is Angie Cornet.
Good evening. My name is Erin Bull. I live at 2703 Chelsea Court in Blacksburg. I'm here tonight to speak with you about the proposed tax increase and budget for 2012. I first want to thank members of the board for your support of education. The last few years, education funding from the state has been reduced, and without your support, we would not have the quality education system we have today. This year, Mr. Meadows, in proposing his budget, said that in order to continue to do business, at a minimum, we needed 12-cent tax increase. I'm here to speak in favor of the tax increase because to maintain our quality system of education, the increased funding is significantly needed. Even with the 12-cent increase, the school system will have to cut things that are drastically needed. This fall, I listened to candidates for the Board of Supervisors discuss the issue of education. During the campaign, all the candidates were pro-education. Several candidates stated they wanted to know about how much funding the school system needed to be adequately funded. So this year, in the budget request, the school board sent you a needs-based budget. Montgomery County needs to keep educators in the classroom. Our county needs to construct two high schools and repair buildings so students will have safe schools to attend. Montgomery County needs to fairly compensate its employees to attract and retain the quality educators who are responsible for training our students for the future. Because of the General Assembly, the school system is required to pay more funds to the state than in the past. These items were all needed. They are reflected in the school board budget proposal. But then, when the Board of Supervisors saw what was needed, they said the school board had asked for too much. So tonight, I'm here to speak in favor of the 12-cent increase. It is necessary to provide a quality education for our children. But this won't cover everything that is truly needed. It won't cover everything that we've listed as priorities for education. In fact, school funding will be at the same level that it was in 2007, '08. And as we all know, over the last five years, costs have not remained stagnant. Tonight, I'm asking you to pass the 12-cent increase because of the county we need to invest in our children. Providing a quality education is not just the right thing to do. It is a driver for economic development in our county. We know that education funding is an investment in Montgomery County's future. To attract and retain employers, we must provide an educated workforce. Recently, I read an article that discussed the tax rate in Montgomery County compared with the rest of the state. It said Montgomery County collected $540 in property taxes per capita. That's considerably less than the state average of $678. That's reflected in our education funding. Spending on education in Montgomery County is only 2/3 what they spend in Albemarle County, the home of UVA. That's somebody that we compete with fairly often. We're roughly the same size. We have roughly the same economic opportunities that we offer. When Montgomery County is competing to attract businesses, they need to have a quality school system to provide a well-trained workforce. As people have said before, when people are considering relocating to Montgomery County, they want to be able to enroll their children in a quality school system. Currently, we have that because of the quality educators here in Montgomery County. But as cuts continue to pile up, that system is eroded, and we are not able to compete. Over the last three years, 50 full-time positions have been lost. This year, we may lose an additional 16, even with the 12 cents. This results in higher class size and less individualized attention for students. So for the sake of our children, for the sake of our own future, the future of Montgomery County, I ask you to vote to increase the tax rate by 12 cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bull. Angie Cornet. And finally, Ms. Cornet is Regina Vassar.
Good evening. My name is Angie Cornet, and I live on Blankenship Road in Charlesville. I also teach at Eastern Montgomery Elementary. I'm here tonight to request that you vote in favor of the 12-cent tax increase. This would allow our school division the funding needed to provide a high-quality education for our students and their families. Many of you have lobbied in the General Assembly to support public education, and we really do appreciate that. Thank you. But they have once again reduced our revenue levels. We cannot be expected to provide the same level of services on a budget from the past. There are always improvements to be made. Best practices in our field show that each child should receive individualized, differentiated educational services. Children are always growing and changing. We need to have resources available for them to stay ahead of the game. The tools they need to be successful grow in complexity each year, and it is our responsibility to help make them effective and productive citizens of the global community. I encourage the board and the community to not view our jobs and responsibilities as a burden, but rather an opportunity and an investment in our future. Today's students are tomorrow's leaders. Everyone needs to take an active role in preparing them for their future. The 12-cent tax increase is only a stopgap measure. We need more to do what is best for kids. This funding can be seen as a rope bridge that goes from one side to the other. It's still shaky, but with a firm foundation and good balance, we can make it to the other side. Teachers are willing to sacrifice to provide students with a quality education. We are overworked and underpaid. We continually are asked more, to do more with less. You should come spend the day in our schools to see how hard we work and what a typical day is. We are only asking the community to sacrifice the way we do gladly. We do not ask to be in the position we are in. The school board has not misused our funding. Our leaders are professional, effective, and committed to the success of our students. Regarding the positions that were paid for out of stimulus monies, those positions reflect where our true need is. In my school, tutors and instructional specialists were hired to provide small group or individual targeted instruction and intervention to the neediest children. They assist teachers in assessing learning, implementing new strategies, tracking progress, and assisting teachers to find new research-based methods to bring success to all children. This is best practice. We should want the best. We shouldn't want to just get by and make do. If you had to have heart surgery, would you want the best medical team, or would you want to be short valuable members to help provide you with the best care possible? I think you would choose the best. I'm concerned the community misunderstands how our schools are funded. The main provision for raising revenue is through property taxes. We could implement a sales or service tax, but the majority of businesses, restaurants, and hotels are either in the towns of Christiansburg or Blacksburg, and that does not help us. We rely on the goodwill of our community members and the leadership and vision of our school board and you, our Board of Supervisors, to make decisions that are in the best interest of children, our children. Come along and walk beside us. Let's be partners to make our students the priority. Sometimes, decisions are tough, but the best decisions usually are the tough ones. Please take a stand and support public education. I'm asking you to believe in us, believe in our children. Let the distribution of funds demonstrate that public education in Montgomery County is our number-one priority. Please vote to approve the 12-cent tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Steve Fizukowski. And after he speaks, we're going to have to take a little bit of a break so our cameraman can change... I'm sorry. Regina Vassar. I'm sorry. This will be the last speaker before our break. Okay? And we have to change discs, and a few of us might need a break here, so if you'll wait till after... Yeah, you won't come till afterwards.
What?
It's all your fault. I blame somebody. Go ahead.
Hello, board members. I'm Regina Vassar. I live at 1731 Big Spring Drive in Ellison. My husband and I are retired. We came to this section of the world to live in the mountains in the very quiet, peaceful atmosphere. We live on a very small income. It seems to me everybody is talking money. They want more money. They want better schools. We deserve this, we deserve that. I'm a senior. What do I get? What do I deserve? I deserve to live. I deserve to pay my insurance. I deserve to buy my medicine. I can't do this if I've got to pay high taxes. I'm sorry I live longer than a lot of people want. I'm sorry I don't have deep pockets like Blacksburg has. I don't, I can't afford colorful T-shirts and stickers. All I can do is, for the life of me, I can't understand why two new schools have to be built, one has to be remodeled, and a courthouse was built that is ever so nice, almost at the same time. Where was that money allotted, and who's going to pay for that? According to everybody here, I won't live long enough. Oh, I know how to pay for this. Sock it to the taxpayers. Well, this old taxpayer can't do it. I just don't have the money. I don't know what you would do. I've been hit hard by food, double heating oil, only four and a half a tank this year. Good thing it wasn't cold. Water goes up, power goes up, and it's still climbing. And then you've got your gas, your $4. I can't go on a vacation. I don't even know what one is. $4 a gallon, we can't afford to go anywhere. So I have a hard time feeling sorry for a lot of these things, because if I can't afford it, you know, I have to live within my budget. I feel like there might be too much conflict of interest on this board. You seem to favor what's best for others, and you forget about us retirees. What do we do? I don't have a snappy end or anything like that, and I don't have a quote from a great dead president. And I can tell you this, I am definitely not happy with an increase. I'm sorry, I just don't have it. But I can tell you this from somebody who's got more clout than Jefferson, my mother. She said, "If you can't afford it, you can't have it." Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to take a few-minute break. Welcome back. My seat's got all messed up here. My seat's got all messed up here. The next speaker is Steve Fidzikowski, and he'll be followed by Robbie Jones. And again, let's try to keep the pause to a zero so we can continue. On a timely basis, we're just about halfway through, so it's gonna be a pretty long evening. And we will have to take another break in an hour and a half to an hour and 40 minutes again to change the tape. So Mr. Fidzikowski, and followed by Robbie Jones.
My name is Steve Fidzikowski. I live at 2557 Mount Pleasant Road, and I'm here to ask the board not to exceed a 10-cent increase. I realize, as many do, that we have to service the enormous debt incurred in building two high schools, especially the one in Blacksburg, the latter being a debt we could have put off by rebuilding the old high school. We have many new or fairly new schools in Montgomery County, yet this does not seem to be enough for our school board. They have much to prove to the taxpayers when it comes to being good stewards of our money. I think of the $1.5 million that was given to them for buses and computers. Apparently, they reconsidered and decided to give bonuses to employees instead, and these bonuses did not increase their yearly salaries, and they did not do anything for their retirements. This does not build confidence in their decisions, especially when more bus money has been requested in this year's budget. This is why I believe they need to look deeper into where they can cut back on programs that aren't working or are underutilized. Our teachers deserve an across-the-board pay raise to help the lower-paid employees instead of a percentage raise, but during a time when other county employees are not receiving anything, how can this be justified? I also think a considerable amount of money can be saved when building schools. Make them functional instead of the elaborate ones we've seen lately with what appears to be a lot of wasted space in the name of architectural design. The ending of stimulus money will affect 16 positions, and I understand, or I was to understand from previous meetings, that these positions are not teacher positions. And I'm truly sorry that these people might lose their jobs, but they knew the positions were funded for only two years. Everyone is getting tired of hearing that times are tough, but reality is what it is. The board must be responsible and hold fast until more revenue sources can be found. I also believe that many of us are tired of hearing that the students will suffer for lack of this program or that program, or that we won't be able to attract quality teachers or even lose the quality teachers we already have. I don't think many teachers will leave because of pay, but I have heard numerous friends and coworkers say that they will move into neighboring counties where the tax rate is lower. The bottom line is that any tax increase will affect my life. I lost my full-time job in 2010 and have had only part-time employment since. With food, fuel, insurance, and other necessities increasing, I have to watch where my money goes. Like the majority of citizens negatively impacted by an increase, I have no tax relief through the county because I do not fit into the qualifications for tax relief. They are fairly strict for good reason and only apply to the most neediest of people. But what about the rest of the people who are just getting by? The board needs to only raise the tax enough to cover what we need and not what we want. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Steve. Robbie Jones, and will be followed by Mary Hauska.
Good evening. My name is Robbie Jones. I live at 996 Cohala Road in Christiansburg, Virginia. Members of the board, Mr. Chair, I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I've come to several meetings, and I've listened, and now I feel like I need to speak. Like everyone here, I'm a tax-paying citizen. I am employed by Montgomery County Public Schools. I am proud to say I am a custodian, and I'm also Vice President of the Montgomery County Education Association. I've heard some negative comments towards MCPS, but MCPS not only has dedicated teachers. The school system consists of bus drivers, maintenance workers, cafeteria workers, custodians, administrative assistants, nurses, and teaching assistants, and we are all educators. The sad fact is, we would not be where we are today if it wasn't for our education. To help you understand how a typical eight-hour shift for a custodian in Montgomery County school system, here's a little story. Imagine you have to clean your home while lots of visitors are coming and going, and imagine cleaning from 25,000 to 40,000 square foot per night in an eight-hour shift. Those are the circumstances for many of the Montgomery County Public Schools' custodians every night. And if that's divided by eight hours, that means a custodian will clean 3,000 to 5,000 square foot per hour, not including the breaks. Please understand that our custodians are trying to complete all of his or her duties with everything that's outlined on their duties. They also, at the end of the night, they will have cleaned a total of 16 homes in one day. Keeping that in mind, I did some research, and we do have some good news. A custodian that has worked for the Montgomery County Public School System now makes... Well, let me rephrase that. A custodian that has worked for Montgomery County School System for 12 years now makes $525 more than the Virginia family median income in 1984. Now, don't everybody come knocking at my door because I haven't been employed by a school for 12 years. But with that said, I support the 12 cent tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Hauska, and she'll be followed by Barbara Middleton.
I'm Mary Hauska, 2301 Spring Hollow Lane, Blacksburg, and I have lived in Montgomery County for 49 years. And I am speaking as President of the League of Women Voters and in the end for myself. The Americans for Prosperity, a national political action committee based in northern Virginia, sponsored robo calls to the citizens of Montgomery County, telling them to go to this meeting and oppose any increase in the county tax rate. I got one of those calls on March 21st. The Americans for Prosperity does not have to register in Virginia as lobbyists, nor does it have to report how it spends its money or the source of its money. Its board chairman is David Koch, a Manhattan, New York resident. According to its website, eliminating a tax increase in Montgomery County is a project of its Virginia affiliate. The League of Women Voters strongly opposes such political action committees. It would be equally upset if a national political act of...
Yeah.
...action committee advocated a 33% increase in Montgomery County property tax rate sponsored by robo calls or mailings to county residents. Montgomery County tax rates are the business of the citizens of Montgomery County and the county Board of Supervisors, you. We have citizens who want a very large increase in property taxes. They choose to allocate more of their income to the public good. We have citizens with a low income for whom any tax increase will be very difficult. And we have citizens who don't want to pay taxes. Now, the personal part. Our own family preferences would have been for much more of a tax increase. However, the recommended budget from the county administrator and you is a viable compromise in these difficult times. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Middleton, and she'll be followed by David Yarborough.
Hello. My name's Barbara Middleton. I live at 1535 Diana Drive in Christiansburg. I'm here this evening to ask the board to think about the taxpayers when deciding on the amount of tax increase and how your decision will be placed in hardship on some taxpayers of Montgomery County. I didn't have this planned in my speech, but the lady that spoke before about her daughter, she advised her not to become a teacher because of the pay and the work. Well, I am a teacher. I have taught for 30 years in Montgomery County. I still teach. I work as a volunteer in my grandson's classroom. I also substitute teach for a very low pay, but I enjoy teaching. I went into the teaching profession because that's what I desired to do. I knew it was a low-paying job. I went from a civil service job to a teaching job because I love teaching. And I just wanted to say that I support teachers. I support better education for the children of Montgomery County. But this tax increase will definitely place many taxpayers in a difficult position. I would like to also emphasize, I've been hearing a lot about the elderly and the seniors, their anti-education. Well, we are not. I want to clarify that. We are for education. We are for the teachers, and this is far from being true to us. We are interested in a better education. We do support teachers. But it not only affects this tax increase, it will also affect the middle-class, the middle-aged, not the middle-class, the middle-aged people. Also, it will affect the younger couples that have maybe a house payment, they are raising a family, and they really are having a tough time now. Perhaps this would be a good time for me to suggest to the board members that we should really consider what is necessary, what is not necessary. I know we have all, every one of us probably have cut things that we have had to pay for the last, say, several months or a couple of years. Really, we've had to tighten our belts, we've had to downsize with things, we've had to cut out things that really weren't necessary for us to have. And it seems like that our governments, local, state, and even higher up, they want to spend now and worry later, and if they don't even have an idea of where the money is coming from. And the burdens cannot continue to be placed on the taxpayers of Montgomery County. And I just know from a personal experience with my own daughter and son-in-law, who have been out of jobs for the past two years, probably they've worked nine, 10 months out of two years because of downsizing, closing of plants, different jobs that they have had, and it's very difficult for them to be able to keep up with all the things that's increasing, your food, your gas, all the utilities and everything. So I feel like that anything that you all can do for us as taxpayers, that you can lower it as much as possible, it would certainly benefit everyone in Montgomery County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Middleton. David Yarborough, and he'll be followed by Dave Sisson. Mr. Yarborough, Mr. Sisson, please come up and speak. And the next speaker, if he'll come forward, is Nikki Kitts.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. I am Dave Sisson. I live at 1720 Big Spring Drive, Ellison, and I was born in Montgomery County, attended elementary and high school here, attended Virginia Tech for a while, have been a teacher and a principal, and I am pro-education, but I am against the property increase of taxes and access to 16% real estate tax increase from what we pay now. And it primarily is necessary because the board was pressured recently to change its vote to build a $52 million school when it could have remodeled it for less than $20 million up here, and therefore, the pressure is put on to increase the payments that are due to the school. And my question here tonight is not against the teachers. I know teachers don't make as much as they deserve to make, and they work very hard. They put up with parents that don't care, kids that don't care, sometimes principals that don't care. But as you know, two years ago, the superintendent, as mentioned earlier, came before the board and asked for $1.5 million for new computers and buses, and only $300,000 of that was applied to those computers, and as far as I know, zeros to the buses. Where is the accountability? And my question is not so much as the increase, but where is the line of budgets that should be presented by the school board, to the school board, by the school administration so that they know where the monies are being spent so taxes are not necessarily to be raised? Good education is not always equated with new buildings and new budgets and new computers, but teachers and parents who care enough to make the students be what they should be. All around this county that borders us, all the counties except one have a lower tax rate, except Runyon County, which includes Craig County, Floyd County, Giles, Pulaski, and even Bottotack County has a lower tax rate than Montgomery County right now. So my question is, there are many residents who are not here tonight. Obviously, if I were a teacher and I were a principal, I'd be here like these folks are, and they were probably, many of those were here when they were voting on a new school in Blacksburg recently. So I just, tonight, I'm asking you not to approve the 16%. I believe that we should be living within our means, and I'm sure a lot of people here tonight who will not speak, who did not have a chance to sign, would agree with me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nikki Kitts, and following Ms. Kitts is Brandon Rup.
Hi, Mr. Chairman and the board. And I'd like to echo the thanks of all, many of the speakers that came and said, "Thank you for the chance to speak and for caring enough to be on the board." I am Nikki Kitts. I live at 310 Gold Leaf Drive in Christiansburg, and I was born and raised here. I still live and work here. My dad, as well as the other dads and moms of the kids that grew up here, paid taxes so that we could all benefit from the services those taxes provided when I was a child, including education, law enforcement, protection roads, and all the other services that our taxes support and that we benefit from. It was our time then when we were children, and we trusted that, and we learned to care because we knew that people cared about us. We knew that the teacher would be there when we got there. We never worried that that teacher wasn't going to be there. We knew that the police officer was around and would protect us in time of need. Well, I'm a landowner now, and I am a teacher. I own farmland in the agricultural district in Reiner, so I understand about taxes. I expect my taxes to be raised. I would be embarrassed if they weren't. I would gladly pay the 12% increase and more because this increase will benefit all of us and all of us who expect to receive services and the things that we need. A 12% increase is the right thing to do in tough times when tough decisions have to be made. So please consider all of those, quality of life will improve with continued and uninterrupted service, especially the children, because it is their time now. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon Rup will be followed by James Wetzel.
Thank you for listening to me speak tonight. My name's Brandon Rup. I live at 3050 Mark Hornes Drive in Blacksburg. I'm gonna do something a bit different tonight than what some have done. Putting aside whether you support the tax increase or whether you don't, as much money has been frittered away, what good is 2 cents or 10 cents or whatever cents is... Well, let me rephrase that. A month ago, I believe Mr. Creed had an altercation with one of the board members, or this has to do with taxes.
All right. Be clear, we are trying to address the tax issue tonight, so...
They asked for 24 cents increase.
Okay.
And a few times before, they said that they needed $1.5 million for buses and... A few times before, they said that they needed 1.5 million for buses and computers, and like we said before, that someone spent on the computers and the rest wasn't spent on that. Now, if I asked my employer for 1.5 million, or 100,000, to do something at work, maybe do better than building or something, and I didn't do what I said I would, not only would I be fired, but I'm pretty sure I'll be brought up on fraud charges, grant theft larceny, and whatever else on top of being sued. Obviously, we can't do that because we're both board members. But where is the accountability? That 1.5 million, if one of the local papers is right, every one cent per tax increase is $700,000. That was more than two cents frittered away. So what is, what's the point? If we don't have any responsibility as to what we're spending it on, why aren't we raising taxes, period? Are we sure we're going to be spending the ten cents on the schools? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wetzel, no applause, please.
I thought that we were not having clapping on either side. Isn't that what we're doing?
Did I just not stop it?
Yeah, well, there was clapping. It doesn't matter what side, it doesn't need to happen.
And finally, Mr. Wetzel, is Roger Woody.
Hi, my name is Jim Wetzel. I reside at 604 Fairview Avenue in Blacksburg. I wanted to say that I'm against tax increase, or at least as high a tax increase as we're talking about. I don't know that some of it is something that you could just simply not do, but I would suggest that the board might want to look at, if you're going to pay, or if you're going to commit the candidate to 125 million dollars in capital expenditures, that maybe that might be best suited to a referendum where it's actually put out to the voters, so that everybody gets a chance to voice their opinion. In the setup of this meeting, this meeting was set up at six o'clock, whereas they're normally at 7:30, and that may have been to be able to clear people before 10 o'clock. However, people who work for a living, who don't get off until five, and then have a half-hour, an hour drive afterwards, don't get the opportunity to come and get their name on the list to speak. And to me, that unfairly advantages and favors people who get off at 3:30 in the afternoon, as opposed to people who get off at 5:00 in the evening. And gives them a disproportionate advantage to come to speak. The other thing is, I'm not against paying schools, or paying schoolteachers, and the 2.9 cents seems like a reasonable thing. It only represents roughly three percent of an increase over the school board's previous budget. But you're looking for a sixteen percent total increase in the property taxes, and that's because the state as a whole has less money to give to the counties. And that's because the taxpayers have less money to give to the counties. And so, everybody is in the same community. Everybody suffers equally, everybody gains equally, and good times of prosperity. And what we're basically doing is, we're increasing school budgets, we're increasing county budgets, when everybody else is doing on less. Last time I came and spoke, my 89-year-old mom, whom I live with, was here with me. She's on a limited income, owns a small house in airport acres in Blacksburg, and $18 a month is a huge deal to her. She lives on social security, and a reduced pension that was left from when my dad died. And between those two things, she doesn't have, she's basically budgeting for food all the time. Some people are talking about, oh, that only being, you know, one burger a week, or whatever. Well, heck, that's important to her. That's important to everybody on limited income. That's not just a little deal to her, that's a great big deal. And that's basically all I have to say. I really think, in summary, that when you're going to build new schools and stuff, that is something that would be appropriate to take to a referendum to the voters, so that everybody gets the proper amount of time to speak, to have their vote counted, to have their voice heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wetzel. The next speaker, Roger Woody, please. And following Roger Woody is Morgan Carr.
I'm Roger Woody, 1285 Trent Curly Vine, Christianburg, Virginia. And I'd just like to say, I had a banker come in and I offered, he told me to, he said, Roger, people have done, used their savings, they're now getting into the return of them. And he said, what are they going to do after that? And you see other counties around here, they're struggling for 1 million dollars. But we're like the lottery. We're going for the mega ball, aren't we? I just don't think y'all thought this thing through, what it's going to do to people, and the condition people are in, and how it's going to hurt this county on growth, and on people losing their homes. I just, I don't think y'all thought through. We're not against education. I don't think this county's ever suffered for education. I think they, we've done real good with education. And like I told you in the last meeting I was here, buildings does not teach kids, the teachers does. If y'all don't do this, how's the teachers going to get raises in? How's the sheriff department going to operate? It's going to bleed everything we've got. What's our bond rating now? Can you tell me that? Is it still what it was? Yeah. You know, I just, I just don't know, I just don't know what y'all thinking when you've done this. That school over in Blacksburg could have been repaired. I'm telling you, there's not a school in this state that you don't go in, that's got cracks in it. It's just that Blacksburg wanted a new high school. And I heard you, I heard somebody say that you said you support, if, they didn't do Taj Mahal. Is that what they're building, the Taj Mahal? Because that's what I heard. And there's other parts of the United States they've done that, they're not even open, they can't even afford to operate. Now, and I hear Mr. Creed said he'd go along with eight cents, because that's what y'all really need. You know how the government works. If you need eight cents, you ask for sixteen. Well, y'all didn't, y'all went for what, 24, 25? It's just, you know, I don't, I don't know what y'all thinking, y'all's thinking is on this, and you should have took it to the people. I just, you know, it's really hard. You know, everybody in here probably knows me, or knows of me, and I've got a lot of property in this county, but I'm not thinking this for myself. And I would like to say to the press, if they're here, because I spoke the last time, I'm not with the Tea Party. I'm speaking from my heart. We don't need this. You can break that contract, because if you don't get the money, you can break the contract. You can break the contract on the school. You don't have to build that school. You come to me and you want to, you want to buy a house, you want to buy a house, and I do a contract with you, and then the bank don't give you the money, you know, I've got to resell it, and I've never held anybody to a contract. So you, you made the, Ms. Perkins, you made the comment before when I was here, that you'd already signed the contract, the contract's done. Well, you can break that contract. And I just, you know, I just don't know where y'all coming from with it. I've heard so much about this school system. I heard before it was corrupt, and I've heard a lot, a lot of people have been calling me, I don't need them calling me. I'm just speaking from my heart what I'm saying. And I just don't think we need to do this right now, because we can't afford it. These other counties around us are struggling to come up with 1 million, and look what y'all are coming up with. I mean, it's just, and most, a lot of these people are getting up here, not going to be here for five years, they don't care. And the teachers, they don't realize it, they're not going to be able to get a raise, because the money's going to be gone. You can't, you can't, they are not going to be able to get a raise unless y'all go up again. I just don't know what y'all think of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woody. Morgan Carr, and she'll be followed by Danielle Waddle.
My name is Morgan Carr. Price is four. Vote for education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Danielle Waddle, I believe, and she'll be followed by Susan Ducker. I don't see either Ms. Ducker or Ms. Waddle. Joyce McGuire, and she'll be followed by Doug Prophet. It's running pretty quick now. Bobby Handy. Oh, we have one here.
Good evening, board. I'm Doug Prophet. I reside at 125 Horn Drive, Boshville, Virginia. I was born here in Christiansburg 69 years ago, in a three-room slat house on Wayland. I watched this area grow and evolve, but it was 69 years. I would like to note from the board, of all the property that's being developed in this area, on the Rhine side, out toward Blacksburg, out 114, and all these properties that I've seen develop in the last 15 years, many of them by Mr. Woody. Mr. Woody has probably developed more property than anybody that's ever been in Montgomery County, and contributed more to the tax base than anybody in this county. We have all these places that are being built, and I've never heard anyone say anything about how these come online, and what difference they make in the taxes that we receive. I'm concerned about the senior citizens. I'd like to remind these people that our push for the schools, yes, we have to educate our kids, but we have working people in this Montgomery County that are either lower, either in the area of, not in the area of five years old to 18 years old. We have senior citizens, we have young families. When I was growing up, there was an expression that says, keeping up is the Joneses. Well, I have a family of Joneses in my family, and I can tell you now, they won't be hard to keep up with, because they struggle every day of their life. They have three children, they struggle every day of their life. He's an electrician, and he works hard. Something that may not be directly related to this, but it's an issue that we need to think about. When I was 28 years old, I bought my first house. I paid $15,300 for it. That would be 153,000 dimes that I paid for it. That same house, in 2008, sold for 153,000 dollars. That means in 38 years, that the property went up 10 times. That's called inflation. That's what's happened to America, that's what's happened to Montgomery County. There's a strikeout coined many years ago. We agreed it sees need, then you're in a mess of trouble. And I've got news for everyone. We, in this country, are in a mess of trouble. We generate more debt in 11 years than we can generate in 225 years. We've doubled it. We've gone from 5.3 trillion dollars in debt to 16.3 trillion dollars in debt in 11 years. I'm telling you, that our senior citizens, I watch, I've dealt in the grocery business and the food business for 54 years. I watch our senior citizens come into the store where I work at, struggle to pay for the groceries. They're calling in a position where they're too rich to get help and too poor to survive. This 18 cents would be murder to them. And one other thing no one else has mentioned, in December, we just paid on a tax increase that happened in this Montgomery County through reassessment. Mine was 6.7. It was 18 percent before I bargained it down. What went with that reassessment, man? Where did it go? Everybody was building an un-sproperty. We had a tax increase in December. You may not call them a tax increase, but still took money out of our pocket. And the thing about it is, there's only so much money in the United States, there is no such thing as money. It's all just points, of keeping points. And if you take 18 cents away, or 18 dollars away from this senior citizen, then you're giving to somebody else. If anybody gets a raise, money has to be taken from somebody else to give them that raise, because we can generate no more money except by printing, like our government does. That's where we're in trouble in this country. Karl Marx said many years ago, "I have no desire to attempt to destroy the United States of America. Leave her alone, and she will destroy herself." And we're there. God bless America, and God bless Montgomery County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prophet. The next speaker is Bobby Handy, and he'll be followed by Vicki Duncan, and I see neither. Randolph Vaclu, and he'll be followed by Phyllis Albritton.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Randolph Vaden. I've lived in Montgomery County for 67 years. I'm a farmer and a homeowner. My family moved here back in the early 1800s, and they've been paying taxes to Montgomery County ever since. I'm one of 13 children. My wife and I raised six kids. They all graduated from Blacksburg High School. The youngest one just graduated from college last June. I'm not against education. What we've done here in Montgomery County, we have put our wants before our needs. Now, my daughter graduated from Virginia Tech with a master's degree with the intent of becoming a teacher in Montgomery County. She has not been able to realize her dream simply because of misappropriation of the tax dollars in Montgomery County. She lives on a road that will not handle a school bus, right here on the outskirts of Blacksburg and Christiansburg. So she has to take her children, my grandchildren, to school every morning and pick them up every afternoon. Now, I pay taxes, we have been paying taxes for nearly 200 years, a little over 200 years. We seem like, it seemed to me like, we should be getting some benefit of our tax money. Now, I know that there are more things in Montgomery County than education. Montgomery County Board of Supervisors are responsible, directing the money that the state appropriates for our roads. And if we cannot get some of our roads fixed, I hear the lady at Big Wagon, she lived on gravel road, where our school buses can get open, then this is a misappropriation of our money. Put the money that we have in the parks and recreation, which is nice, that's a want. Roads are a need. And we put our money in the library. My wife attends the library quite often, so do I. That's a want. But we've got to have our needs met first. What I've listened to here before, most of the people that have spoken before me, it's quite obvious, they own a taxpayer's income. Most of us citizens here in Montgomery County are not. We, if we are drawing a paycheck from the taxpayers, we can vote for an increase in taxes. Now, as I just heard the gentleman speak this before I spoke, that we had an increase in December. Every time that the county reassesses property, that's a tax increase. We should not have to raise the levy at any time. So I think that if we had the majority of Montgomery County citizens here tonight and take a referendum, you would find that most of us are against any tax increase whatsoever at this time. We need to put our wants, our needs before our wants, instead of putting our wants before our needs. Now, as I've spoken before, we have more things to do in the county than just education, but we need to get, give education a priority, and when we spend our tax dollars for raises for our teachers, which they do deserve... which they do deserve, but to pay them on a percentage basis, and whenever our county administrator, which is given a lucrative salary of over six digits, when he gets 10%, and they get 10%, their 10% is a whole lot smaller. And so I think that we need to be a little wiser in the way we spend the money, instead of just buying what we want, instead of addressing our needs first. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Phyllis Albritton. And she'll be followed by Brad Hill.
Phyllis Albritton, 1003 Highland Circle, Blacksburg, Virginia. And I really thank you for this opportunity. Once again, I come before you to say, yes, our state is wealthy, the sixth wealthiest in the nation, our capita Income. And yet they're not giving us enough money this year. In fact, they're cutting back because our income did not go down much. Our real estate did not go down much. Our employment did not go down much. And I really am sorry that I have to stand here and say, I am for the 12-cent increase for the needs of our community. I have to also share my deep disappointment, as have some other speakers, in talking about the robo-calls that have been coming through to Montgomery County. The organization, Americans for Prosperity, is funded by the Koch Brothers. I find it fascinating that the Koch Brothers' billions started in the Soviet Union, in Communist Soviet Union, when their grandfather laid gas pipeline, oil pipeline, for the Soviet Union in the 20s and 30s. And now these souls, bless their hearts, want to do away with government, including public education. They support the Cato Institute, which is for privatizing our education. And it's so painful to me. My parents were immigrants. My grandfather was forced out of the Communist country because he would not join them. And they burned his hay bales. They beat the heck out of him. He thought he was going to Argentina, but he came to the States. Thank God. But when I think of this money that started with the Communists is now supporting this energy and effort to get people to come to you through robo-calls to say, "Let's not raise the taxes," is painful to me. I know several people have told me that we do have people in our community who could use the lower taxes or no taxes being paid, but they're too proud. They don't want to come forth. And my feeling is, if I could talk to these people, I would say, "You have given to this community all your lives, and now let us give back to you." I really hope that we can help people in that situation. One of our speakers spoke in terms, Ms. Pleasant, of all the things that our school systems had piled on them. And I have here to give you, from schools cannot do it alone, this gentleman recommends that we do get foundations going, that we do call on people throughout the community, and not just the taxes, to help us. But he starts back before 1900 with the Massachusetts Puritans, who stated that they assumed that families and churches bore the major responsibility for education, for raising a child. Then in the mid-'70s, Benjamin Franklin added some science and geography to our basic early, early schools. It goes through to 1960, where we start adding Head Start, which I'm afraid we may be doing away with at the national level, Title I, etc., 1970s Drug and Alcohol Abuse Education. And it goes on through the 1990s, where we have education on so many things. The demands on our public schools have increased, and probably for the good, because it helps our poorest. And those are the children I'm here for, whose parents don't get food in their mouths, who don't read to them, who don't have a structure and love and limits, which they do get in the public schools. Another thing I'm going to give to you all is this amazing program of all of our middle and high schools, music program, just this week. We are so blessed with the programs we have in our school systems for all of our children. As someone mentioned, sometimes someone doesn't make it academically right away, but it could be this music teacher that's made a difference. For my son, it was athletics. And I'm sure many of us know that if it weren't for the athletics, our kids wouldn't be in school. And I'm grateful for everything every person in our school system does for us, in our public libraries, in our sheriff's department, in our social services. I'm hoping we can become the city of Montgomery so that those of us that live in the towns only pay for one administration, one recreation department, and one police sheriff department. But this evening, I'm here to encourage you to go with the 12 cents so that we can have the best for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Albritton. Brad Hill. And Mr. Hill will be followed by Miko Sullivan.
Good evening. My name is Brad Hill. I live at 3855 Eagle Country Drive in Rhine, Virginia. To me, tonight isn't about a 12-cent increase. It's about doing what is right. Over a year ago, it was decided to move forward on building two high schools and renovating a middle school. You knew at that time that it would cause a big jump in real estate tax. In actuality, it is about nine cents out of the proposed 12-cent increase. Now, not only are we looking at an increase that was approved by you, but we are also looking at losing funds from the state of Virginia. I believe this makes up the other three cents of the budget. Now, that is not our fault as a county. I ask you to make up the difference in the loss of state revenue and continue on your path that we put forth more than a year ago. Now, if you look at the school's proposed budget, you will see that it is actually less next year than it is this year. When adding in healthcare, fuel costs, and everything else that has gone up, you can imagine how the schools are taking a hit. However, it is not only the schools that take a hit when advertised rates are lower. All county services have to make cuts, yet all encumber the aforementioned costs. Finally, one of the major issues being addressed tonight that I feel is about how our budget is funded. I encourage you as a board to seek as many avenues as possible for raising funds to help support and better our county. Until that time, I accept my responsibility, no matter what it takes, to help better our county and to cause it to shine. And I do accept the 12-cent tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Miko Sullivan. And he'll be followed by Starflower O'Sullivan.
Hello. My name is Michael O'Sullivan.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
That's all good. I live at 11700 Carthage, Blacksburg. I am a proud member of Occupied Blacksburg and very proud to be part of the Occupy movement. A very dear friend of mine, my buddy Stuart, is very active in the Tea Party. He actually ran for public office on a Tea Party ticket. And Stuart and I have talked many times about what needs to be recognized more, which is how much the Occupy movement and the Tea Party movement have in common. Actually, it's a fair amount of overlap. And that's what I'd like to briefly address with you tonight because we've had a lot of contention here tonight, different viewpoints. One thing we need to recognize, the reason that we are in this budget situation with our schools right now, the approximate reason, the immediate reason, is that there have been such tremendous cuts coming to Montgomery County from the state level. That is, the state is cutting our public education funds. I'm here tonight to ask for a specific item from this board. The state is cutting funds at the same time that it is giving various tax breaks. Now, I would like to commend to you that you take a look at a report from the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee. That is a state organization commissioned by our legislature to audit various state budget issues. And they recently came out with a study of the effectiveness of tax breaks. And they were very, very critical of the effectiveness of many tax breaks that are going to large corporations. And in other words, bottom line, if you're going to give away $22 million here, a couple of billion dollars there, there needs to be some concern of whether or not that money is being well-spent. And I'm urging this board to go to our legislators, to go to Richmond, physically go to Richmond, go there, knock on the doors and say, "Look, if these tax breaks are ineffective, why are you giving these tax breaks, but you're also cutting our budgets?" Now, I want to repeat that the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee has some excellent information to work with that will, I think, address the issue of we're losing money from the state simultaneously to their giving away money ineffectively in other places. So I hope you'll look into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Starflower O'Sullivan. And she'll be followed by Andrew Mike.
Hi. My name is Starflower O'Sullivan, and I live at 11700 H. Cardinal Court in Blacksburg. I'm with Occupied Blacksburg, and I am here to voice my commitment to funding public education. Investing in our children and in our public education system reflects my quaker testimony of equality. Our budget reflects our county's values, and I want a budget that values equality and opportunity for all of us. I don't have children, and I don't have a great deal of money. I've been a citizen of Montgomery County for over 30 years. The proposed budget requested by the Montgomery County School Board includes $3 million in additional funding for the Montgomery County Public Schools' operating budget. The additional funds compensate for the reduced revenue from the state, bringing their budget to the same operating level as last year. This additional $3 million in support of education will be generated by the 12-cent proposed tax increase and will help ensure quality public education. The website for the Montgomery County Public Schools says that the 12-cent proposed tax increase would significantly bridge the gap for the school division's operating budget and fund the debt service for capital projects underway in Auburn and Blacksburg. Their website also says that if this budget is approved by the Board of Supervisors, the Montgomery County Public Schools will still face difficulties balancing how to maintain a quality education in Montgomery County while dealing with increased expenses mandated by the Commonwealth of Virginia. However, the cuts required based on the county's proposed budget will not be as detrimental to educational programs as the original budget presented by Governor Bob McDonnell. The budget decisions that you will make will affect each person here. Your decisions will affect every person in Montgomery County. That is a given. But the question is, how will we be affected? The quality of education in our county will affect not only our children, but each and every person in the county because the quality of our schools and teachers helps determine the quality of professionals and workers that our county will attract, which employers may locate here, the jobs that therefore will be available, and ultimately, the money each individual and business will make. Education is a common good. I hope that our budget will reflect a responsibility to our community and to our children by supporting the funding of public education. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew Mike. And he'll be followed by Rick Weaver.
Chairman Politis, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Andrew Mike. I reside at 209 T-Speed, Department 10 in Blacksburg. I'm a member of Occupied Blacksburg. And before I begin, I just wanted to commend you all for having the dedication to stick it through tonight. I understand we started at 6 o'clock and it's now almost 8:45, and I'm confident we have more people. And at the same time, I'd also like to express my embarrassment for some of my fellow citizens in this room, for their lack of decorum. Clearly, we should have had that speech on civility a little that we had last time, perhaps this time. Anyway, the matters before you today about the tax increase that we have, and I'm in support of that. I think it is vital for the funding of public schools. It is not enough. And that was made clear to you when the school boards submitted their budget, a needs-based budget, because that is what they need. Everybody's been coming out here talking about wants and needs and how this is how we, and how the budget is more of a want than a need. And the school board was elected to tell you all what they needed. And they took a risk. They took a risk when they said, "This is what we need." And they brought it before you. Because, and I admit that the school board's relations with the Board of Supervisors and whatnot has not been an entirely harmonious one. And that's to be expected. There are money issues at stake. Everybody fights when there are money issues at stake. But the bottom line is, there are that what they propose to you is a needs-based budget. And I do not envy your position. Richmond has lain a lot of, a lot of our issues here tonight can be lain at the feet of Richmond. They've cut funding, as usual, for a lot of things. In fact, I was kind of astonished when somebody up here mentioned that the school system in this county was run with two-thirds of the funds needed to fund Albemarle County. And I was a little bit flabbergasted because I was in Albemarle County Public Schools. I knew how bad they were. And it's actually amazing that the school system in this county manages to thrive with less. And I think that the school system should be commended for that and not ridiculed, poo-pooed, and other things that some people here have before you told, have people here told before you today. I don't think that these teachers got in it for the money. I think they worked very, very hard. I have two friends. One of them's a teacher at Margaret Beeks Elementary. The other's a student teacher in Tappah County. They certainly didn't get into it for the money. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair for people like that to be, I don't think it's fair for teachers to be painted with the same brush. Everybody, I've heard a couple of people on the other side say, "Hey, we need raises. Hey, we need raises for teachers. Why are you building these buildings?" And it's like, "Well, yeah, I agree with you. We need raises for teachers. We need a larger tax increase to do it, but you keep opposing taxes." And so does Americans for Prosperity, which I understand may never be aware of this meeting tonight with robo-calls. And they can afford stickers, just like the rest of us. As one speaker mentioned, "Oh, well, they can afford stickers." They can afford stickers too, it seems. Anyway, I'm Michael Mike. So, it's like, there's got to be an endgame to all of this. And if you increase taxes tonight, the schools will be, well, I wouldn't say adequately funded, but they will be funded to such a degree that nothing will collapse. And if we don't, they're not going to stop there. Americans for Prosperity and the Tea Party, they won't stop there. They want to keep cutting taxes. They want privatization of schools. They want to eliminate government. They think that government has no place in American society. And frankly, that is abhorrent to, and that viewpoint is abhorrent to me, and it's abhorrent to a lot of people. And if we put it to a referendum tonight, I think more people would find that they'd want a government, including good public schools. And they'd be willing to provide the tax they need to pay for them. And I think that they elected all of you to make the right decision, the right decision for the schools, and the right decision to stand up to bullies like Americans for Prosperity and the Tea Party. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Rick Weaver. And he'll be followed by Clark Webb.
Good evening. I'm Rick Weaver. I live at 3475 Eagle Brook Road, Christiansburg. I too received a robo-call, and that was the primary reason for me to come before you tonight. You've already heard most of what I have to say, so I'll try to be very brief. You've heard that the Americans for Prosperity was started by and receives large funding from oil industry giants, giants, including the Koch family. What I don't think you've heard is that the AFP and the Tea Party have a pretty close relationship. They issue joint press releases about Montgomery County's proposed tax increases with the byline from the Americans for Prosperity and the New River Valley Tea Party. The questions I would like you to ponder as you consider all of the things you've heard from all of the different groups and all of the different speakers are: How many of the Koch children attend school in Montgomery County? Which of the major contributors to the AFP pay taxes in Montgomery County? And what exactly is their interest in the property tax rate in Montgomery County? It was once said that all politics is local. My fear is... My fear is that "all politics is becoming national." I'm not sure that's a positive trend. I would like to share with you a quote from the New River Valley Tea Party website. "It does not take a majority to prevail, but rather an irate, tireless minority." Speaking for what I believe is the silent majority in Montgomery County, I ask you to remember who your constituents are and to deliberate and make decisions based on what is best for Montgomery County, not what is best for the Koch family. As a tax-paying property owner, I support the 12 cent tax increase to benefit our community and our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Clark Webb, and he'll be followed by Dale Weberly.
Thank you very much for allowing the public to speak on this very important issue. Just two quick points, because others have spoken very eloquently, expressing support for my position and your position, I hope, for the 12 cent increase. This is News Messenger, front page story. Survey says quality of life, excellent or good in Montgomery County. We're doing a great job in this county. We have an excellent county administration, excellent school system. Many of us who have spoken eloquently tonight on either one side or the other come before you with skills that we picked up in public education here in Montgomery County and throughout our country. Now, with good press like this, you can expect Montgomery County to have a higher profile as a destination for people to move here. So what we're trying to prepare for is the future. And 12 cents is the minimum of what we need to ensure a good future for all of our children. Secondly, a quick point, we have a tax relief program in Montgomery County for those who are unable to pay property taxes. I would suggest that that be given a little bit of a higher profile and maybe the Board of Supervisors can look at, maybe some more, hesitate to use the word "little," but some more beneficial way to implement that and perhaps increase it a little bit so that the burden doesn't fall so hard on those who are least able to afford it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dale Weberly, and he'll be followed by Jack Sokolovich.
Thank you. I'm Dale Weberly. I live at 1417 Crestview Drive, Blacksburg. My two children attended Montgomery County Public Schools for thirteen years each. They've graduated. So I don't have children in the county schools, but I still live here and the kind of public schools we have affect me and everyone else who lives here. When I hear the Cato Institute, Americans for Prosperity, and others attack almost every kind of school spending, other government spending, I'm reminded of a political cartoon in which a man picks up a magic teapot. A genie comes out and the man wishes for no taxes and no gall darn interfering government. This is from the actual cartoon. The genie grants his wish, things go poof, and the man opens his eyes to see a big sign that says, "Welcome to Somalia, that lawless destitute haven of pirates." The cartoon exaggerates, but it makes a powerful point. When a nation's people can't or simply won't cooperate together as a people to invest in the future, they end up with a miserable future. And to truly cooperate as a people, we need to work through a democratic process that involves government. I spend a lot of time in countries whose governments don't invest much money in their public schools or other public services. They have names like Nicaragua and the Dominican Republic, and they have a lot of poverty and literacy. They're not Somalia by a long shot. By doubt, many people in this room would want to live there or have their children or grandchildren educated there. And when I'm in those gritty countries, it strikes me how people in America who oppose public investment emulate the actual practices of those poor countries' governments. Now, I'm not enthused about paying higher taxes, but I'm a lot less enthused about living in a place where public education is declining because government won't invest in it. My children have graduated, but the educational system of this county still affects me and I still have a personal responsibility to support it. So I support raising the county's property taxes by 12 cents since we need to do it to maintain our schools at their current level. It is an investment in the future. And I also ask those opposing these taxes to reconsider their position because the county public schools benefit them as much or more than they benefit me. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Sokolovich is next, and after Mr. Sokolovich, we're going to take another break so we can change our topic.
Last but not least. Good evening, everybody. I, one of the few people in this room that actually has a copy of your budget here. This board alone was responsible for creating the financial chaos we're enduring. You did this so by incurring debt without asking the taxpayers through a referendum to vote on assuming this debt. If you had, then all of us would share in the responsibility for incurring the debt. Instead, by executive fiat, this board acted on its own to take on the debt and now the citizens have to pay the price. Refer to your budget. Page 21 of your proposed budget indicates we have $3,488,000 in year-end reserve funds. Why aren't we using those funds to diminish the debt? In concert with the $1.7 million growth from last year, this would cover one half of the debt service, or debt service increase, I should say. Then you have $1 million allocated for our rainy day fund. I think a collapsed roof would qualify as a rainy day event. This is the time to utilize those reserves. Should the economy pick up, we can start to replenish those reserves next year. These measures would diminish the increase by five cents, necessitating only a seven cent increase. On page 20, the budget intends to add another million to capital reserves. That's another penny plus that we could use to reduce the increase. If you intend to build the animal shelter for $3.5 million, then actually use the million dollars this year that you're setting aside for that intended purpose and not let it sit and linger where it might get reallocated. That was a word that was used during the budget discussions. As this hearing goes on, you will hear pleas from businesspeople as well as individual taxpayers. Please remember that when a business has its real estate taxes raised, it must pass on those increases to its customers just to survive. The taxpayer gets hit not just at home, but every time she goes to the stores and the restaurants. This has to have a negative impact on shopping purchases, which in turn reduces sales and tax revenues. In prior years, just a few lonely citizens would come up to this lectern and beg you to consider their plight. Look around the room, folks. You have a sleeping giant that you awoke. The taxpayers are here. They're all from Montgomery County, even though they may have been notified elsewhere. They are outraged, they're angry, and they don't appreciate the way our county is being mismanaged. The full brunt of your votes to pass two bond issues without referendums are coming to bear upon all of us. The members of this board need to go over all funding requests, line by line. I know it takes time, but all of you spent time and money running for this office. Most of you sit on a multitude of boards governing the citizens of this county. If the strain of public office is too time-consuming to do this, then resign from some of those positions and concentrate your efforts on being our financial stewards. It is your fiduciary responsibility to maintain proper fiscal management of our county budget, including the vast amounts going to the school system. To dispense over $91 million to a school system and then hear employees report having to purchase classroom items and hearing reports of major building repairs indicates there's flawed priorities in the school district budget. Require their administration to get their fiscal house in order. Your constituents demand accountability. We don't want the out-of-control spending that is rampant in Washington to happen here in Montgomery County. Reduce the tax increase to seven cents. It's there in your own budget figures. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. We're going to take a few-minute break here and following the break, Bill Murray and Tom Picarello will be the next two speakers. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. And again, Bill Murray is our first speaker. Tom Picarello has left for the evening, but he has left his comments with the clerk if she'll get them to us. And following Bill Murray is Donna Martin. Go ahead, Bill.
Bill Murray. I live at 401 Givens Lane in Blacksburg. And it's nice to see everybody out tonight. Usually it's me and just a couple others that show up. I hope you all continue to come because these issues are ongoing. And just to educate a few, this tax increase is not about education or the schools. It is about servicing the debt. And there's even a question whether the tax, the money can be collected because people have the option of leaving. And those that can't pay the tax could easily leave and go to a neighboring county that has a lower rate and a similar quality lifestyle as we have now. The debt that we have incurred has been avoidable. If the schools had been properly maintained, we could reasonably have expected the Blacksburg High School to still be standing. Now we must build a new high school in Blacksburg and build one new school in Reiner and repair another. This was all deferred, but was there a lesson learned in that? I think not. Money that was allocated last year for buses, as Mr. Creedler pointed out, was used for something else. There are no buses, no buses were purchased. It's a good idea to replace the buses as they age out of service. However, when you keep waiting to buy them, you keep increasing the cost and it shows up in the budget every year and we still have no buses. Are we going to wait till the whole fleet needs to be replaced and we're back looking at borrowing money to do that and another tax increase? Had there been referendums on the bond issue and this tax increase, and talking to people across the county, not just in Blacksburg or Christiansburg, but over the eastern part of the county, I'm confident that it would not have passed. And it's, if you consider that, Montgomery County is unusual because it has tech. And the tech population at tech gets rolled into the county population. So it looks like there's more power in Blacksburg when there really isn't. Students can vote, but they don't. And the full-time permanent residents are opposed to this increase here. While the county median income may be $65,000 a year, but there are many families, seniors, and persons with disabilities who have annual incomes of less than $12,000. And many of those families do not even have insurance. This has been talked about, an investment in education, our return on investment. What return? When students graduate from high school and they go on to college, they don't return at the counter. Who benefits from our investment? It's not us. It's someone else. Now, $20 a month increase in real estate tax may not be much for some, but there are those of us who, when we start paying our bills for the month, we usually run out of money before we're done paying the bills. $20 a month is $5 a week. Maybe it's a hamburger somewhere. But it's a significant amount of money for a number of people. The program for tax relief do not apply, it only applies to people who own real estate. It does not apply to renters, and I rent. My landlord then can raise my rent. It's like giving him a license to raise rent. He's going to raise it anyway to cover his increased operating costs for that year, plus another $20. So I could see my rent go up $100 a month, and I get no relief for that. Consider the tech students in Blacksburg living in an apartment. To try and save money on their rent, they're going to pack more kids in one apartment and then we're dealing with code enforcement issues. And who collects the fees for that? The county? The town of Blacksburg? Or who? You see, it's not as simple as just raising the tax and servicing the debt or raising the tax to pay for schools. It impacts, in a broader sense, everybody, and I'm opposed to it. The referendums, as I said before, to raise taxes or even issue the bonds would probably not have passed. Therefore, do not raise these taxes. And keep in mind that raising the taxes will hurt more people than it will help. And that's all I have to say for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Thank you.
Donna Martin, and she'll be followed by Michael Colson.
Hello, Board. I just want to say I'm not Donna Martin or Dr. Tammy. And she has to go. I get my dad home because he works for Blacksburg Transit in very early morning hours. I'd just like to say a lot of different things. I've been here several times. I know some of y'all on the board and do respect y'all for what y'all do in the community. And Mr. Brown, I've known you for a long time as well, when he was on the Police Department in Blacksburg. But I have been, for 45 years of my life, I've lived here in Christiansburg. And my brother, as he stated before, before y'all, a year ago, about the construction of the Blacksburg School. He has a business in Blacksburg, he has a business in Christiansburg, and he lives in Montgomery County, or Reiner. And of course, all my family live in Montgomery County. And I will say this, my job market that I work for, I'm a rap person with freedom of life. I work in Reno. And I hear it all the time about the taxes and how they're heavily, they're not as much, they're very heavily down there in other words, in Spitt Mountain Lake area where I work. But it's only going to hurt our county because everybody loves our county. I hear people run it all the time, love our county, and Virginia Tech and all the surrounding areas. The problem is with the economy, and I see it in my field all the time. People don't have the money to buy a bag of chips because of the gas prices at almost $4 a gallon. And the tax increases at 12 percent. You know, I went to Christiansburg High School myself. I graduated in 1984. I'm very proud of it. Christiansburg High School is a very nice school. So is Blacksburg. Blacksburg, they went in that school, as Mr. Sari said last year, they went in their school two weeks before Christiansburg did. And, you know, it could have been repaired. Granted, I'm for education. I'm for the teachers, as Ms. Milton said, because I've done a lot of things with her. She's a fine teacher and I know a lot of other fine teachers in Montgomery County as well. This still lives here. But I just will say that if you do propose this tax increase, you're going to cause a lot of people in Montgomery County to move out. And what a lot of people in Montgomery County live here are from Floyd County years ago that made up Montgomery County. Some of y'all moved in. People that, like I said, a lot of people still sit here probably. If you notice the people sitting in this room, they're older people. Like has been mentioned earlier, senior citizens and, you know, different older people. They're paying the taxes. And granted, I'm younger. I'm 45. But I don't have the property that some of these other people do. And they can't, you keep eating and eating and eating, they're not going nowhere to do or go or go on vacation, like was mentioned. I vouch we can look for other ways, you know, to help our situation. And I really appreciate y'all taking the time to listen.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Michael Colson, if you'll come forward, please. And following Michael Colson is Frank Zepperso. No? Frank Zepperso? Yeah, Mr. Zepperso. Okay, Mr. Colson isn't here. Mr. Zepperso apparently is not here. Bruce Cunningham.
And first of all, my name is Bruce Cunningham. I live in 1515 Red Hawk Run in Montgomery County. I wanna thank you, Board members, for what all you do and then some. I'd like to start off by saying I'm opposed to the 12 cent rate, but I'm not opposed to a rate increase. The, that, as some folks have pointed out, that 16 percent, it's a 16 percent rate increase. And I don't know about what side of the fence you're on, but we've been in a recession and there's, some people feel, I feel slight, that we haven't really come out of it yet. And there's a lot of hardship out there that people are enduring. And if you don't believe that we're still out of the recession and it doesn't take too long to look to see what government is proposing in terms of what their low rates for some time to come that's gonna be out there. So the rate of recovery is probably not as imminent as we'd like for it to be. So therefore, my reasons for that, not supporting the increase are basically because of the economy at this time. I feel like that it could cause some hardship on people that are delinquent or would increase the delinquency rate. It's a common economic measure that when you use more of your money to pay off debt, that there's less for consumer spending. And looking at the budget, as someone pointed out, that your sales tax, which is projected to be a six, six and a half percent increase, could really be in jeopardy of not going in that direction because there's more money being spent on debt. The last thing that I'd like to mention is, and it's been mentioned a few times tonight about our dear friends in Richmond. I feel like it hasn't really been mentioned enough because our state irresponsibly has not passed a budget. Second time, is I understand, in our Commonwealth history. That is unexcusable. So therefore, that puts you all in a burden to try to do your best, again, thank you very much for what you have done, but to guess at what it is you're gonna get from the state. And that's not right. It's unfortunate that we have too many politicians and not enough statesmen to do the right thing, but that's another day. So therefore, what I'd like for you to take away is this. You have supposedly a deadline, to my understanding of April the 16th, to come up with the numbers. Is that etched in stone? I don't think it has to be. I know there's been one other time you didn't come up with the, the actual rate until sometime later. So the state's already been guilty of that. I'm not saying you should be guilty of the same thing, but I say to you, wait until you know what you're getting in terms of revenue from the state, and then go back to the table and find out how much you could decrease that number. You know what the max number is, and that's 12 cents. And if it comes, come down to 10, 7, 8, that's a great thing. So I just ask you to take away that, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. There's Mr. A. Paul Thomas. If you'll come forward, please. And following Mr. Thomas is Lena Penny.
Hello. I'm kind of done here after listening to all these hours of talks. And I imagine you are rather much worn out and it'll be putting a little more pressure on you to have to listen to me. So I wrote earlier what I would have to say and tried to make it brief. And I hope you won't force me to use the microphone.
I believe your voice is scaring enough.
Because of a condition that I have from a grand mal seizure. The reverberations of that noise from the microphone disconcerts my thinking. Well, I'm A. Paul Thomas. I am reluctant to give you my address. The society nowadays is such that one is warned, don't give out your personal data to anybody. And there may be strangers in here whom I wouldn't like to be known better, but anyhow, I'll say this, and I don't know if there's a time limit, there doesn't seem to be tonight.
Five minutes?
Five minutes? Oh my, five minutes only? It's a short period of time insufficient for one to be able to say all that needs to be noted with respect to the oncoming dreadful tax increase. I will therefore confine my remarks to these few that can be read to the microphone. Yes, I know the marvelous endeavor of this county to provide public education for its citizens is to the benefit of everyone. However, is not this effort now going beyond good discretion as to what is scholastically When you remember those who must pay for it and their ability to pay gives one question to authorize such an increase. To some, it might be, seem feasible to have it this year for the coming year alone, but we all know the increase will be permanent and in years to come will be the foundation for further increases yet to come. And then there's the further increase, natural and hypothetically inflated from reassessments to the value of people's dwellings and land. This is a time of economic cutback. Can the school system of the county not find means also to cut back? How about, for example, in-school athletics? Interschool, not intra, but interschool sports, let's say, which are not germanely scholastic? Shouldn't we all read Mr. Sari's written comments in the newspaper a few days ago pertinent to a new Blacksburg High School to replace one which was new only 35 years ago? Shouldn't its lifetime with some repairs have been twice that number of years? One final note. Couldn't we have devised and entered into the curriculum required courses in the building of good character? What constitutes good character? What are, what are the, the components of good personal character? And how are they recognized and developed? The goal of such a curriculum would be to have an ethically minded people. I love, Mr. Jefferson has been referred to a few times.
All right, Mr. Thomas.
I love his idea for, for more worthy students to learn.
All right, Mr. Thomas.
Don't lie, don't cheat, don't steal.
Mr. Thomas, your time is up. Thank you.
That's all right. God bless everybody.
Yeah, I believe it's Lena Perry is next. And following her is David Guy, Sr. I don't see Ms. Perry. Hi, David Guy, Sr. And following David Guy, Sr. will be Carl Polly.
Good evening, Supervisors. Thank you very much for an open meeting. Thank you for your attention, your comments. I'm David Guy, resident, taxpayer, registered voter, veteran, and I work as an engineer. I support teachers.
Could you move to the mic, please, sir?
Excuse me. I support teachers. Our daughter's a teacher, certified in Virginia, son-in-law's a teacher. But as you know, well-known, school boards, principals, and teachers, well documented, the parents support, make a big difference, students success. So why is our daughter not teaching now? Stress on the job. Where does that stress come from? Other school boards in this good country, county boards, supervisors have alternate ways to provide classrooms for education. I'll give you a copy in color. Who? Harvard University, childcare, Newman Elementary School, Needham, Massachusetts, North Ann River, Early Childhood Center. They built handsome, functional classrooms with state-of-the-art equipment. Who? Triumph. They built 30 module classrooms in 60 days. Thirty of those classrooms are connected via a card. You can go on the web and you can see it at a fraction of the cost. I have two grandchildren. Nathan's five, Josiah's two. Nathan's been going to school already for two years. He goes to Calvary Classical. He knows his letters, his sounds, and he memorizes things in a play, even knows Psalm 23. My fifth grade teacher taught me Psalm 23, proud to say. There was a time when that was taught, where it would be taught at school. So why is Nathan, who is a son of two teachers, why is he not in public school? Why do two teachers, one graduated Virginia Tech, two degrees, Radford, one degree, certified in Virginia, not put their children in a public school in the state of Virginia? Why? Because they're very educated. They were educated at Virginia Tech, they were educated at Radford, they learned to think. Where do I put my child to give him the best education? They had a choice to make. It cost them thousands of dollars a year to do that. And they pay taxes. Who is our competition? Is it the people that come to Montgomery County or Floyd County or Roma? I work in Radford, not elbow to elbow, but within several feet of engineers and others, 30 years old, 40 years old. Where do they go to work? They travel to China, they travel to India, they go to Europe. That's how they earn their paycheck. They don't work in this county every week. That's the competition. Competition is not all here, it's there. Even though they live and pay taxes here, I do support teachers a whole lot because we pay for their education. We believe in them. And their teaching degree and education serves them well. I do not support the buildings as proposed as you see as their alternatives. There are others, speakers tonight, that said, you can adjust those contracts, you can think of alternatives. Smart companies in this United States that are still surviving, that still have employees, that haven't completely gone bankrupt, they've had to reinvent themselves. One of them has happened. Why are businesses leaving Montgomery County? Because we're not isolated, we have to compete. The average income of a family in Montgomery County is not $65,000. And who is the biggest purchaser of treasury bills? We know China's number two. Who's the biggest purchaser of treasury bills? That drives our economy. It's Bernanke and the US government. We are buying our own debt. How long can you buy your own debt and survive? One lady tonight talked about Dave Ramsey. He got in my face over the radio and made me real mad. I had to adjust and make goals and pay off every debt that I didn't have except the mortgage. So I encourage you to do the same.
Okay, Mr. Guy, your five minutes is up. Thank you very much. Carl Polly, and following Mr. Polly is Matt Wosnawski.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Carl Polly. I live at 580 DD Drive in Christiansburg. I've been a Montgomery County resident for over 30 years and an employee of Montgomery County Public Schools for more than 20 years. All of my children are currently students at CHS and CMS, and we are very pleased with and proud of the quality education they have received in this school district. I am here tonight to speak in favor of the full 12 cents tax increase necessary in Montgomery County to fund the construction of our new schools and to bring funding of the school division's operating budget up to 2011, 12 levels. As you've heard many times over, Montgomery County Schools is currently operating on 2007, '08 funding, and there are additional losses of funding to schools anticipated for 2012, '13. This Board also made a commitment to support the building of our new schools. We now need you to honor this commitment and ensure that the funds are available to see these projects to completion. I realize that by wearing my green shirt this evening, some will label me as one who is just supporting his own continued employment. And I want to be very clear that I am in support of a tax increase that will put no additional money in my pocket. Even though I have not had a salary increase in three years, my health insurance premiums continue to go up, and I already pay $10,000 a year for that, while my benefits become less, and now I face the probability of another deduction from my paycheck to cover the shortfalls in BRS, I am still willing to have my taxes increased for the benefit of our public schools. Why? I understand how important the continuation of a quality public education is to our community and to our country. I see many of my neighbors and friends here tonight. Some I know are here to voice their opposition of a tax increase. I understand that it will be difficult for all of us to pay additional taxes in our current economic times. However, it is my hope that they will come to realize the importance of having a well-supported public education system that is not seen as an enemy to the very people it serves and that all citizens will understand that they must pay for its continued existence. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Wosnawski, and he'll be followed by Kenny Lancaster. I don't see Mr. Wosnawski. Oh, Wyatt Hopkins was also signed up, but he had to leave early and he'll be sending us an email.
Um, Mr. Picarello sent us an email.
Oh, I mentioned him.
You did?
Yeah. All right, Kenny Lancaster. And following Mr. Lancaster is Megan Dorsett.
I'm Kenny Lancaster. I live at 904 Radford Street. I have property, I don't have a prepared sheet with me like everybody else has had, and I'm just speaking from my gut, the gut feeling, the way I feel about it. I don't feel that we need this 12 percent. I own property in different places in Montgomery County. And I know I'm not gonna pay all this 12 percent that y'all pose. Now, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna offer some of y'all some of my property, and you can have it if you wanna finish paying for it and you pay taxes on it. Like, I have a few pieces of property that I rent. And what I need to do is, I guess, is let some of y'all, any of you, if you want, you know, if you wanna, want my property, just say, well, you know, a couple of them, I'll let you have and finish paying for it. You pay taxes on it. I'm getting tired. I've been here 67 years. I was born and raised in Montgomery County. I've owned property for about 40 to 45 years. I own property in Floyd County in the if it comes down to this, I mean, I'll get rid of my property in Montgomery County, and I'll move to Florida. I got two houses and some property in Florida, but I've got quite a few pieces of rental property in Montgomery County. But why should we continue to pay the taxes that we're paying? Can I ask any of you personal, any personal questions?
Not this evening, sir.
Do I?
Not this evening.
Well, I'm wasting my time being here then, ain't I?
This is our time to listen to you.
Well, that's what I thought. Am I wasting my time to be here? It sure appears that way. Mr. Brown, you don't want your property and the taxes increased on your farm, do you? How big a farm do you have? I'm sure you don't want that twelve percent added to what you already paid, Mr. Creed? You've got property too. You don't want to add the twelve percent to what you are already paying, right? I mean, you know, people, you get tired of stuff being crammed down your throat. Things that we don't, you know, we're to a point that I'm ready to move. I'm ready to go out of Montgomery County. Now, if y'all like it or not, I mean, it don't make any difference for me. I'd move to Floyd. But I do oppose this twelve percent. That's about all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Lancaster. Our next speaker is Megan Dorsett, and she's followed by Tom Zuckerwar. Is Megan here?
She left.
She left? Okay. Tom Zuckerwar, and he'll be followed by Jennifer Mingle.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to share a few remarks tonight. My name's Tom Zuckerwar. I live at thirty-nine ten Fieldcrest Drive in Reiner. I'm a taxpayer and property owner in the county. I find it interesting that in the world of business, when a company wants to borrow money and build a plant, and hire employees, and pay fair salaries with benefits, and deploy the latest technology to compete most effectively among the industry and best serve its customers, it's considered a good thing. In fact, we encourage expansion through incentives and grants. Yet, some would say that when schools want to follow a similar path, it's considered wasteful, or greedy, or just plain too much. When the sheriff's department wants to provide the best equipment or the best training, how can some claim this is unnecessary, or overt, or not in the best interests of our community? I think the opposition that you might be hearing tonight is a classic case of the squeaky wheel getting the oil. Loud does not mean right. Easy does not mean good. Cheap does not mean better. The value of a quality and properly funded educational system not only provides for the ultimate and immediate needs of our children, but it serves as the very foundation for long-term community growth and vitality, period. The value of a good police force directly impacts every single person in this room. The only people who want to live, work, and play in a community of crime are those that are probably involved in crime. Crime rates and educational opportunities and a well-educated labor force are likely the top considerations of both families and companies that want to move and work and stay in the area. I've never seen or heard of anybody saying that they're not going to move to Montgomery County because of real estate taxes. Yet, I see people move here every day because of our schools and the quality and safety of our communities. Other county operations are just as vital. Community services make communities better. I recognize that we live in a time where everybody wants to serve their own self-interests, but I think it's a slippery slope when schools, and police, and county operations are cut without regard for the greater good. Long-term community consequences are developing a forward-looking model of success. Investing takes us forward. Cutting takes us back. The vote on real estate taxes isn't as much about twelve cents per hundred. It's about what kind of community do we want to live in? I vote for investing, and I hope that the vocal output of a few will not diminish my message or that of a more quiet majority. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zuckerwar. Jennifer Mingle.
My name is Jennifer Mingle, and I live at forty-five twenty Blue Heron Drive, and that's in Reiner. You have a very difficult decision before you. People on both points obviously have side, um, both sides have a point, sorry. Um, there are a lot here that just don't want to pay higher taxes. Um, there are some that it will impact, and there are others that it will be very difficult for them. And, you know, we can't turn a blind eye to that. But at the same respect, I believe that I've learned a lot through this process over the last two years since we've been talking about the school construction projects. And in the beginning, I'm sure you remember, I was an advocate for repairing Blacksburg High School, and a large reason for that was because I thought that was an alternative and would help with some of the tax burden on our citizens. As we all know, who've been involved in the process, after months of listening to experts and different meetings, spending hours and hours and hours going through all of that, repair in the end was not an option. What it became was renovation, and that was based on the list given to us by the Town of Blacksburg Building Inspector. And again, you know, whether you liked it or not, those were the things that were going to have to be fixed to get a certificate of occupancy for that building. And it grew far beyond the fifteen million of repair. And at some point, it just didn't make sense anymore. So if we don't build a high school in Blacksburg, if you just want to focus on that for a minute, what is the alternative? The alternative is to do nothing. And I think a couple decades of doing nothing in the seventies and eighties got us to where we are now with our school construction. And I don't think those children should stay in school in Christiansburg for a long-term solution. The capacity of the school doesn't suit the enrollment. They have a lot of mobile units there, and it is costing us a good bit of money to bus those students, and it has an impact on them and their families, being bused to a different county or a different city. If you look at Auburn, the middle school there, if you do nothing, is at one hundred and fifty percent capacity. We have ten mobile units behind the school that have been there since the school opened. Not quite that many. They've been added over the years. And that was supposed to be a short-term fix for us. It hasn't been short-term. It's been long-term. Some of you might be aware, just a couple weeks ago, one of those mobile units caught on fire. My daughter was in that mobile unit. Now, luckily, they all got out before anything serious happened, and everything was fine. But that's just another safety issue associated with mobile units being used long-term. They should only be short-term solutions. Um, the high school, again, is old. It has issues. It has problems. It's overcrowded. We have mobile units there. So if you don't do anything, then our students stay in unsafe, inadequate facilities. As far as building the new schools, again, that has been a long process. There have been a lot of cuts along the way. Um, each high school was cut twenty-five thousand square feet to save on budget. Each school construction project has undergone, undergone a value engineering process, which means, you know, you look at the plans, what can be reduced, what can be cut, where can materials be downgraded but still be quality materials, but a way to save money. So all of those things have happened for all the school construction projects as a way to try and make it more affordable. Even the contractor has cut some costs. So there's not an easy, good solution for anyone. But I don't think that doing nothing will serve anyone well in the end. And I do fully support, um, the tax increase to fund our education and to fund our school construction projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mingle. Uh, Ms. Mingle is the last one on the list to speak to this public address. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes. And so far, I see two. This gentleman was first, I believe. Three, four? Now, this is to the tax rate. After this public hearing, we'll be going to the budget.
I had to make some notes, so I hadn't intended to speak, but I'm going to now. My name is Eddie Evans. I live at twenty-eight oh six Tall Oaks Drive, Blacksburg, Virginia. It's the house behind the new school you're going to build, the three soccer fields. I opposed the three soccer fields because I thought it was going to be too expensive to build, but that was part of the deal, like in the government. It was a rider. You took the school and the soccer fields or neither. I'm going to start out. I've lived in Blacksburg all my life, sixty-six years. I went to the school behind the Army Building in Blacksburg for my first seventh grades. As you know, tech has renovated those and still use them, so we can't talk about ages. They're probably eighty or ninety years old. In nineteen fifty-eight, I was lucky enough, they approved an eighth grade. Used to go from seventh grade to high school, so I had to pull an extra grade from school, which happened to be in the school you just recently tore down, Main Street. I went there in fifty-nine, graduated in sixty-three. Well, when it was stopped, you built a new high school. I've been told it cost about five hundred dollars, five hundred thousand, keep that up to par. But no, you let it fall down, you ended up having to tear it down for nothing. That school at the present day is only fifty-two years old. It's not real old, especially when you're using Army Buildings. Tech's still using those. They're probably eighty or ninety. So then, uh, one of the things about the new school was, I've heard here, you know, on the old school, you had supposedly Blacksburg planning, building committee person to give you insight on the school, how bad it was. I think it should have been unbiased contractor doing that because he could have been bought off. I don't know what could have happened, but I would have had somebody, you know, as other people, give you opinions of what to do to the school. I've had an unbiased person come in here and tell you what need to be do and need to be done, and the thirty or forty thousand dollars, that extra whatever. So that wasn't done. As far as retirees, and I'm one of them, luckily, the Lord's been good to me, but most people have to live off of CDs or money markets or whatever, and we know the amount of that is zero. So it's hard to live off of money you can't make money off. So these people are having a hard time to pay for anything extra than there's, there's things they have to do. Now, I wasn't here when the school was designed. I probably should have. I was subbed my own house as general contractor. I do know when you build anything, straight line is the cheapest route to go. I'm talking rectangle building. Now, we got this call at the top, as the man said in Old Christiansburg, I'm going to mention his name, is a real estate man who builds homes. We could have probably saved a lot of money with a straight-line school because I'm all for education, but a big, beautiful building of all different roof lines costs you a lot. Every time you change a roof line, the expense goes up, 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 up. You could have built a straight-line school, metal building, well- insulated, and still educated the kids as well as you could, and the building costs you twice as much, but that wasn't even considered. I don't know why. I mean, we're worried about education. I'm all for education. I graduated from Blacksburg High School. I've been here all my life. But why are we spending so much money on school for looks? It's sort of like Radford Hospital. They've got a player piano and a waterfall. The people have to pay them to go to use that place because that's part of the building. Now, you don't build buildings, in my opinion, that's expensive to build. You build them to educate, the most inexpensive way you can. Don't throw out a lot of money for looks. Looks don't educate a person. As far as real estate, I live at twenty-eight oh six. I pay real estate taxes. Best I've been told by those realtors, real estate in Montgomery County hasn't went up. But my real estate went up. The price value went up. It went up about fifty-some thousand dollars. Yep, they came selling for that. So you got that extra money off of me already because I have to pay those taxes. When you show me anywhere where real estate's going up, most of all, real estate says it's going down. So people's already paid that. So I'm here to say, you need to reevaluate this. Reevaluate, maybe wait for the state to come up with their budget, whatever, but don't make a quick decision on what it's going to be. I think twelve's a little high, but I think you need to make a good feeling on how this should react to the people that are here to pay it. And like I said, a lot of these people are living off of CDs, money markets, whatever. They're making zero interest, so they're actually living off of their retirement. Most of them social security. So you're into their budget. They don't have a budget.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Anybody else wish to speak to this public hearing?
Eddie Evans.
And state your name and address, please.
Certainly. My name is Christopher Jordan. I live at forty-one thirty Crimson Drive in Blacksburg, Virginia. Uh, some of you may remember me from the earlier conversations with the board around Blacksburg High School. I didn't come with a lot of prepared remarks today, but some of the things I heard inspired me to speak, and I think you all should hear from, uh, some of the other people in the community. I do not work for Montgomery County Public Schools, but I am here to say that I support the tax increase. Fundamentally, people do not move to Montgomery County for low property tax rates, or most people do not move to Montgomery County for low property tax rates. They move here because it's a clean, safe, family-friendly community with an excellent educational system. I'm working on my third degree from the University of Virginia. I can tell you, Blacksburg is one of the last places I envisioned myself landing, but when my wife, uh, was finished her residency, was looking for a place to live, Blacksburg just hit all of the right criteria, and we love it. And one of the things that drew us here is the educational system. Education is central to the health of the community. Whether or not citizens, some of them who have spoken today, have children in the system, their lives are affected by the health of the system. The health of the educational system helps to drive employment, growth, and change in the community. Whether or not you have children in the system, the health of the educational system should be important in any rhythm of Montgomery County. We need to respect our public servants, the teachers, officers, firefighters, who keep us safe and keep our community strong. This is not an ideological or philosophical position. This is simply a recognition of the realities that we face. You cannot say I'm for teachers, but I'm against paying for education. It doesn't work like that. Educational excellence, the path to educational excellence, decided by many of the speakers today, said it's fine. Well, it can't, it can't stay fine unless you're funding. Montgomery County has built its reputation on a strong educational system and a commitment to a high quality of life. I urge you to vote for this tax increase to help support and continue that high quality of life. Thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Chris Simonowski from three-nine-five Howard Street in Christiansburg, and I'm against the tax increase, period. And, um, you know, comedian Chris Rock one time said that if someone takes money from you and you're not giving it to them, it's not called a tax. It's called a jack. And I'm tired of getting jacked everywhere I go. Taxes are going up everywhere, and I'm just getting pulled at both ends, and I can't afford it anymore. One of the luxuries that I can afford is a private education for my children. My children do go to St. John Newman Academy, and from what I understand, their learning outcomes are twenty percent better than at Blacksburg and in Christiansburg, and they do this on a shoestring budget. Their budget is a fraction of the budget of Montgomery County Schools. And what I'd like to do is encourage you to go to St. John Newman, have a class outing, and go to St. John Newman and learn what they're doing, and apply that to your schools. And it's, it's actually not about teacher quality. They're able to do it through a really low facilities cost and through some other sacrifices. But they're doing it, and they're doing it well. Um, and I, and I don't mean this as a joke. I'll be there tomorrow morning at eight-thirty, and I would really honor, I'd be surprised, but I'd... but I'd really honor the opportunity to show you that school and to show you what they're doing in a very affordable way, in a highly successful way. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Simonowski.
Hi. I'm Marjorie Mullins. I live at 220 Citrine Court in Christiansburg, Virginia, and I am a teacher in Montgomery County. I teach third grade, and I have two children in Montgomery County Schools in Blacksburg. And I just wanted to say that, that teachers are struggling too. We have, we pay the taxes. The pay rate here has been not increased since 2008, so for inflation, we've not gotten an increase. We're dealing with, you know, insurance costs for our children, depending on if you, you're married and your husband has an insurance policy or not. A lot of single teachers are struggling. Some teachers are having to get second jobs, and we are struggling too. And we're every day in the classroom, and I love teaching, and I became a teacher because I love teaching. But the classrooms are already full. I teach at Gilbert Linkus, and if Harding Avenue is possibly going to close, Gilbert Linkus could be one and two. And, I mean, that's, that kind of sets the environment for teachers to really start to worry every single day when we go to work. And we work very hard. We put in a lot of hours. We don't leave at three-thirty. If we do, we're take, whenever our contract time is up, we're taking stuff home with us. There's meetings, there's parent conferences, there's training, and we do it because we love it, and there's a lot of good teachers. I've lived here in Virginia only since 2007. There's a lot of wonderful teachers here, and I see people every day doing a lot of extra work. And as a parent, I am proud that my kids are in the public school system, and I am very proud to see what they are learning and how they are doing, and that they will continue through Montgomery County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this public hearing? Come forward, please, ma'am.
My name is Patricia Lovell. I live at 304 Lucas Drive in Blacksburg. First of all, I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for all that you've been through. You've worked very hard, and you've continued to see this through. I wasn't planning on speaking this evening, but I too feel very strongly about this issue. I would say that I would hope that every opportunity to scrutinize this increase has been done, that every opportunity to find resources and tap into them will be done and has been done. But if, at the end of the day, all of that has been done, and twelve cents is what we have to have in order to go forward, then I would support that. A few of the things that I've heard tonight, talking about whether or not to redo Blacksburg High School, my daughter was in ninth grade when the gym fell. I bought the house where I am because the Harding Avenue Elementary School was there, the middle school was there on Main Street, high school was right up, the park is right up. Beautiful location to raise a child. When the gym collapsed, that kind of did away with the plan of my daughter being independent and able to walk to school and walk back. And I originally wanted to see that school rebuilt, until I found out how it was built, and I saw the report, and I saw the film of how fast that gym came down, and I found out that when it was originally built, there were tremendous problems with that school. And the engineering firm, which is the one that was brought back in, although it had changed hands, to look at this and said, oh, we can redo this, that's what they said the first time, that the gym had cracked, not the gym, the school had cracks and was leaking and falling apart. So I didn't have a lot of confidence there, and then I learned the details and materials, lost confidence too. One of the speakers that came up talked about, we have a lot more common ground, everyone here tonight that has spoken, and I agree with that. I think we all want to see Montgomery County prosper, and citizens of Montgomery County prosper. I had the pleasure of listening to one of the members of the Board of Supervisors speak at one time, and I was told that for every dollar that individuals pay in taxes, the county puts out a dollar ten. For every dollar that the county brings in from businesses, I believe at the time, the county had to pay ten or twenty cents out to those businesses. My point being, the way we bring business here is a good workforce. We have to have a good education. We have to have skilled labor in order to bring in more businesses. And if we cannot provide that skill, businesses will look elsewhere. We've already seen that happen just recently with a few of the businesses that looked here and didn't find everything that they needed in terms of skilled labor force. We are privileged. We have Virginia Tech, we have Radford. They give greatly to the school system, and I think with the schools and the money that we put into the schools, they'll continue to give. So I ask you to support this. I ask you to look for the future. I know it's a sacrifice, but I think generations that have preceded us have sacrificed much more than what we're being asked to sacrifice now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience that would like to speak to this?
Hi. I can't believe that I'm saying this. My name is Molly Salznick. I live at 2109 Broken Oak Drive in Blacksburg. I am a parent of two young boys, an almost two-year-old and a six-year-old at Gilbert Linkus, and I am mostly a stay-at-home mom. I am very fortunate that we can get by with what my, with what my husband makes, and I volunteer every week at least once at Gilbert Linkus to help with centers, and I cannot say enough how much those teachers already do with very little. And I know for a fact that our, my son's teacher spends a lot of her own money to pay for what the class needs, and they have a one-to-twenty ratio for kindergarten. I can really only speak for my experience, and I cannot imagine if we had to absorb other children. It would be pure crowd control, and I can't, I mean, I just can't imagine it. And my son is incredibly bright. He's, he's excelling, and I feel like I have to fight really hard to make sure he doesn't get lost, and that's important. So, thank you.
Thank you. Come forward, please.
My name is Mary Ann Hanson. I live at 307 Egan Street Southwest, and I'll just be brief and say that I support the twelve-cent tax increase. My son is currently in the tenth grade, and if the, the new high school is built on time, which we're not holding our breath on, but if that happens, he would be the first graduating class from the new high school. I just want to reiterate what several speakers have recently said, that, that there were earlier speakers who said, oh, well, we should have rebuilt the old high school. Well, we had a long, hard public discussion on that. You guys have spent a lot of hours thinking about that. The school board has spent a lot of hours thinking about that, and I think you made the best decision based on the available evidence at the time, and it is clear that that school should not have been rebuilt. And my question to some of the people who mentioned that earlier is, I wonder if they were here listening to all these arguments when that decision was being made, because a lot of people spent a lot of time on it, and I think that was a good decision. I hope you'll stick with it, not only for my son, but for all the other children in the county. I support the twelve-cent tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Morikawa. I live at 1505 Westover Drive in Blacksburg. I hate to be another Blacksburg person. Makes it seem like such a divide, but I want to support the tax increase. I can well appreciate how complex this decision is, how hard it is for you to deal with the situation that you're having to deal with, the things that, that have come together to create this. And I think that we live in a vibrant, growing community. As citizens, we need to accept the responsibility of that and to keep investing in the public services that we enjoy. And I thank you for your courage in advertising a twelve percent, a twelve cent increase, and please do not back away from it. In fact, please start planning now to increase it significantly again next year.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name is Lynn Everett. I live at 1610 Westover Drive, Blacksburg, Virginia. I too had not planned to speak tonight, but I can't sit back there and listen and not comment on some of the things that have been said. I grew up a farmer's daughter. I really had a lot of sympathy for the woman that spoke earlier tonight. My parents are still farmers. They are retirees. They live on very fixed incomes, and they own about five hundred acres of land in South Side, Virginia. I called them last night and asked them, what were their thoughts on the tax increase? What would they do in Brunswick County, Virginia, when faced, when faced with the same thing? My mom said to me, Lynn, that's a no-brainer. I want to live in a safe society, and I want to live in a place where I know I can be proud every day that the kids in my county are growing up to be good citizens, to take care of me. That, to me, is a no-brainer. I know I have to pay my taxes. There's no other alternative, death and taxes. That's exactly what she said to me. There's a reason I did not move back to Brunswick County, Virginia, when I came here to Montgomery County twenty-five years ago. The reason is because we do support our community, if with our tax base. We have great public schools. Back in Brunswick County, I had to attend private schools. The schools were not safe, and they were not good school systems. They still struggle to put kids in good school systems there. Dr. Sari, who did write the letter about Blacksburg High School, was the superintendent in a nearby county of mine, and many of my friends did not attend that public school. Lastly, I just want to say, my daughter was in the gym the night before Blacksburg High School collapsed. It was a very frightening experience for her. I really do not hope we ever have to go back and talk about that issue again. If you were to ask her to this day, and she witnessed that gym falling because she was getting ready to go in and have soccer practice, she will tell you, Mom, I will have never stepped my foot again into that building. It was too scary. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Styles Milton. I'm from 8919 Run Oak Road, Elston, Virginia. I'm here to speak as a current farmer, someone who really knows the value of working hard for what you get. I would like to point out, we own land in just about every part of the county. There isn't much of it. We don't have a little piece of, and that little sixteen percent, twelve cent increase would be a lot of money to us, and we try to make money off of our property. Now, our income is based upon what other people want to pay for our products. That isn't always consistent with the tax rates, isn't always consistent with whatever your bills are that month, but nonetheless, what we get is what we got. I just want to speak on how, really, that change could change our lives. It could change what we have, what we will have, what we can do for the rest of our lives. And just, I agree with, education is needed, but whether you're teaching in a shack, whether you're teaching in a mobile home, or whether you're teaching in the best school ever, it's the people in that building that make the building. It's like a church, the staple, and here the people, whether you're teaching in a barn, whatever, it's the teachers that make the difference. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Deacon, Chairman of the Board, Board Members. I'm Thaddeus Marshall. I'm a farmer from eastern Montgomery County. I oppose this raise of property taxes. I, the raise will bug the hinders in the stewardess of the land that, for we entitled to operate and support our means of living, and I do not, it's, feel free that we should have a tax increase at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? How long are we time, ma'am? Okay, we're going to go to our next public hearing in a moment, but it's about time to change our tape again, so we'll take a few minute break, and the next public hearing will be on the budget. And I thank you all very much for coming, although you look like they're leaving. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are back. And at this moment, we have, let's go. Here it is. We have about six people signed up for this advertised budget public hearing, and the first name is Mary Allison Galway, and if she'll come forward, and we have the same rules apply with five minutes, name and address, and please stick as closely to the budget as we can.
My name's Mary Allison Galway. I live at 606 Allegheny Street in Blacksburg. I've been very lucky. Education was something that my parents valued, and they made sure that we all had a chance to go to college, even though they had to put themselves in some debt. Now, I started college, I was the oldest, I started college in 1965, graduated from Rutgers University in 1969. I think that probably the same situation existed at Tech, Virginia Tech, as at Rutgers. They're both land-grant universities with the state. My tuition for a semester in 1965 was two hundred dollars. Room and board was also two hundred dollars. So when we talk about how prices have gone up, I think you know what Virginia Tech in-state students pay these days, and the same is true, I'm sure, at Rutgers. I don't think we should shortchange the schools. My brother was two years younger than I, and he had a learning disability, except they didn't know about those then, and so he was considered just slow. And he would have benefited from longer test times, because he could do the work, it just took him a lot longer to do it. And so my mother had to work with him every evening. She got him special tutoring, she took him to doctors. I mean, it was just this sort of endless twenty-year struggle to get him into college, to a special college that would have special remedial type of stuff to start him off and to keep him going. And he's never really made more than twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Now, I've got a PhD, but I consider him one of the smartest people I know. But it's not book smart, it's people smart, and he's a very good friend to a lot of people. My sister was, again, different. She went to one semester of college, came, came back home, said she didn't like it, signed up for a community college, went to a week of classes, and then dropped out. But she's, she's smart too, in her own way. She's an office manager in her doctor's office, and she knows how to deal with Medicaid and Medicare and all the insurance companies, and stays on top of things. My brother, without my mother's extra help, would have fallen through the cracks. There's all kinds of kids out there who are going to fall through cracks if you let them. And it's true, they spent less on schools in those days. They didn't have all the remedial stuff, and they didn't have all of the extra help that kids can get now. But to sacrifice those kids is not an answer. Right now, the federal government's trying to cut, 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 and they're pushing it down to the states. Paul Ryan's budget came out to- Paul Ryan's budget came out today, and it pushes all kinds of things onto the states. The states want to cut, 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 nobody wants to raise taxes, and they're pushing it onto the municipalities and the counties. So the buck stops with you guys. And I appreciate all the hard work you do and how late we stay at these meetings. And I appreciate it very much. And please fund what is in the budget fully. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Chancey, who I believe is left? Harlan B. Miller?
Mr. Chairman, esteemed and illustrious and very patient members of this board of supervisors, thank you for your service. I was going to say something about fanny fatigue, but I won't. I think I've got a case of it, and I wanted to just mention briefly, you all know why I'm here and what we do, and I thank you all for supporting the fire and rescue people. There are thousands and thousands of calls that none go unanswered in the county. All of the county services are provided by volunteers. The Fire and Rescue Commission has worked hard, and we have been blessed with a supervisor's member to guide us, and Greg Mettis to guide us, and I've worked with about all the county administrators we have, but I'm not at 39. Carol has been blessed, and she has the numbers background that we all need so much. We just thank you so much for providing for us better than it used to be. And I wanted to thank you for it, and thank you for having the opportunity to be here, provide us with Neil Turner, and the support we have had to do on our own up until the last few years. And it's really been special to me personally. And I would like to ask if anyone has any questions. If not, I'm going to go home, go to bed, and encourage you all to do the same.
Thank you, Mr. Epperali. Have a very pleasant evening, and thank you for your words. Andrew Mike, please.
Chairman Politis, members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is Andrew Mike, and I reside at 209 T Street, Department 10 in Blacksburg, as I'm sure you're all aware from the first time I got up here. I wanted to talk to you about supporting education, public education, in this budget. And I believe that is an important thing. Somebody earlier from the other side mentioned about private schools and about how they educate all these people, and they're better, and they perform better on a shoestring budget, et cetera, et cetera. The thing of it is, though, is that private schools don't have to admit everybody, especially the people that are expensive to educate. And that is always the thing that seems to be missing from that bit of argument that they always bring up here, when they say, "Oh, well, private education is more efficient." And it's like, and that's only true because they don't take the people with learning disabilities. They don't take the people that take longer to learn. I have attention deficit hyperactivity disorder. I was diagnosed when I was five. And I had trouble learning early on. I have trouble organizing my thoughts sometimes, which is why sometimes when I come up here, I tend to ramble. However, I got through my schooling, and got through it very well because of the special ed teachers that I had in high school and in lower schools that helped me learn and provided me with the tools I needed in order to help me learn. And all of that was possible because communities believed in public education. And so while you're deliberating over the budget in the coming weeks, I urge you to please, please, please make sure that education funding is a priority in this county, because if it isn't, a lot of people that would not be served by private schools would fall by the wayside when public education quality inevitably dwindles, and people turn to private schools, and they stop believing in public education. Because eventually they will. When things stop functioning, people lose faith in it. And that's part of the reason the Tea Party is here. Part of it is that we have lost faith in our government to be responsive and to do the things we needed to do. But their response is to abandon it. Mine is to support it. And to give it the tools it needs to provide for the people of this community who cannot speak for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mike.
Thank you. My name is Bruce Cunningham, and I still live at 1515 Run Oak Road. So anyway, I'd just say again, thank you for your endeavors. Pass along some good news. I just heard from my wife about the House did pass the budget. So maybe there'll be some new money that you can appropriate. Well, so if the rest of our side of the legislature, on the Senate side, we'll act more like statesmen and not politicians, we may get that done. That would be nice. So anyway, looking at the budgets, and I will have to admit that after, and I looked at them in previous years, but when you get a 16% increase, it's going to hit you, I don't care what level of income you may be, you tend to wake up or pay attention. So I started paying attention, and I looked at the budget in the paper. And I should, and I will, take the liberty to look at the full budget. But some things that really, some questions that resonated in my brain was things like revenue. I'm used to looking at not only income and expense statements, but also balance sheets, which don't publish that in the paper seemingly. And on a balance sheet, I'll look at assets and liabilities and things of that nature. So in the income and expense side, I saw this column, saw revenue stabilization fund, which that's a new one on me. That may be a county municipality type of accounting piece, I don't know, but I thought that was pretty interesting. And I'm assuming the, also the county capital fund, $700,000 is a, I would imagine, a reserve fund, expense fund that goes into the reserves. So you take the two added together, and you're a little over a billion dollars, and I'm assuming that goes to the reserve fund, which I just found out tonight, may be three or four million dollars. You do need reserve funds. Anybody should know that, but hopefully people should know that. But one of the things that jumps out to me the most is the article that was written indicating that in the past three years, the debt service increased 139%. That's pretty alarming. And while the overall budget increased only 3.9%, that goes towards debt. And once again, I said it earlier, once you start paying for debt, it leaves less money for goods and services. Try to be a good steward of that. I know you're doing the best you can, certainly with the state and federal government, I might add, that support your budget to the tune of what appears to be 45% of your budget. I think we all, including you all, and the people in this room, when it comes time to it, that we need to tell our legislators to act more like, act more like, not politicians, but again, statesmen's and statesmanship. So within that, thank you, be a good steward of that. Hopefully, the Senate will give you a vote for the budget, and you'll have some more money to work with. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cunningham. He's the last person who signed up for this public hearing. Please come forward. Say your name and address, please.
My name is Richard Workman. I live at 212 Pine Drive in Blacksburg. For the record, I would like a written reply to my questions and comments. You know, we have the usual turnout from the school employees. They want more, and they need more. But it's going to tell you how much this proposed tax increase of 12 cents is going to hurt low-income and senior citizens living on a fixed income. It's going to be the tipping point that may cause a lot of property owners to move from Montgomery County. This huge increase will turn Montgomery County into a tax hell. Don't forget, for the citizens of Blacksburg and Christiansburg, we also have a city property tax we have to pay. In my case, if this tax rate of 87 cents is passed, plus the 22 cents that play in Blacksburg, it's a total of $1.09 in property taxes. That's a rate comparable to Northern Virginia. But to show you how a touch pre-supervars are with reality, they wanted a rate of 13 cents to be advertised, which would create $700,000 in extra money to spend. This is an example of liberal progressives who have never met a tax increase they didn't As the gentleman said before, this tax increase of 12 cents is just laying the base for the future of Montgomery County. I've been attending these budget meetings for the past four years. In a bad economy, government and debt has grown tremendously. How much is our debt? If the debt service is going to be over $24 million? I'm not against education. Matter of fact, I married a teacher. And in past few years of my career, I served on the school board at one point in time. But you need help with this huge budget. You need a professional consulting firm to analyze these requests. I understand you don't even get a wide-eyed budget from the school board. You only get four or five categories. Is that the way it's done with the rest of the departments in the government? You have a school board that pads its requests each year. I used to manage a retail business that created over $15 million in volume a year. And it was easy to pad a budget. We have a school board, you've already heard about, and you know about, the school buses and the computer fiasco. But they've had surpluses of over a million dollars in the last couple of years. We have a school division that spends 88% of its budget on personnel. Another division will spend $27,000 in administrative benefit packages. We have a county that provides little benefits to employees. We may not be able to continue to support this with our employee participation. We have a government with system and benefits and programs that we're beginning to learn that we cannot support. Our county has about a 9% real unemployment factor. We have a high percentage of poverty in our county. How many foreclosures on homes have we had this year? Probably about 20.
You have five minutes, Mr. Officer. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak to the budget? Seeing no one, I want to thank everybody for coming this evening. It may have been a long night for us, but I realize many of you people have been here working all day, too. So I feel for you all, too, and I appreciate you sitting through the process this evening. And I think I can speak for all board members that we will definitely take all the remarks into consideration before we make our final decision. Again, thank you very much for coming, and meeting adjourned.